First thing we should do is stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, this is the flag of the United States of America. And to the people of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and ever changing.
Justice for all.
Okay, invitation for public comment. Is there anybody here who would like to address the board for public comment? Seeing an emphatic no from the audience, we will move on to the items for discussion. There are four items tonight. The first is the D-128 Summer School Spring Presentation.
All right, so, good evening, members of the Board of Education and the D-128 community. Myself and Mr. Dan Stanley come to you today to bring you some summer school updates, as well as some recommendations for summer school fees. But first, I'm just gonna just share with you some of the progress that we have made since first semester regarding planning for summer school. So, summer school this year will take place, two sessions. We will have the first session on June, from June the 3rd through the 27th. Second session will be June 1st through the 25th, with non-attendance days for June 19th and July the 4th. Our course offerings were updated and finalized before the end of first semester this year. And within your packet, I have attached the summer school website where you can find more information. In addition to this, registration regarding summer school will take place in early March after the conclusion of staffing. Speaking of staffing, an interest email was sent out to our staff regarding working for summers, working during our summer school sessions. And we had an overwhelming response of staff who showed interest in teaching this year. So, we have majority of all of our summer school courses covered, unless there is an increase, a substantial increase, in a student needing to take a summer school course. The only additional, only staff that we are currently looking for would be U.S. History and driver's ed. However, we are doing really, really good this year in regards to staffing. And then, in regards to LST support, for the past two years, we've had a social worker to be on-site during summer school. And so, this year, because last year, we did not have any incidents or needed a summer school, a social worker, we are doing something a little different, where we will have a social worker on-site during the first weeks of summer school, which is June the 3rd and the 4th for two days. And then, the week of June the 10th, when we will bring in our students with special needs, we will have a social worker on-call for that entire week. And then, we will have a sign-up sheet for social workers' availability to come in if we do need their support in the building. In regards to online classes, we've also done some structuring in what, how classes are offered, not only during, for summer school, but during the course of the year. So, again, aligning with our current school handbook, students are only eligible to take up to two credits during summer school through online courses. We will continue to offer initial credit, credit recovery, and repeat and replace. And then, we will not be offering any credit, any eligible credit, to any outside online courses, outside of our D-128-approved Imagine Learning courses. And then, last but not least, in regards to Imagine Learning and staffing, if in the fact that we need staffing for a particular course that we are having difficult to fulfill, we will offer that Imagine Learning to stakeholders, and they will be notified by the end of March, which would be different from what we did last year, because we didn't notify them until, I would say, mid-April, late-April. So, we're trying to streamline and make it a more efficient process, as well as making sure that all of our stakeholders, students and families are, receive that communication. Just as a reminder, our types of Imagine Learning courses available are courseware, our courseware courses allow our students to take modules that determine their learning and mastery. And because of this application, the program allows there to be some flexibility for students to demonstrate their understanding, but also to finish their summer school classes quicker. And then, of course, instructional class courses are the full courses. They are taught by a, well, not taught, but they are facilitated and supervised by an Illinois-certified teacher in that particular subject, and they have to finish that course from start to finish. Also, as part of summer school, we offer ESY, as well as educational life skills, transition pathways, and student success. So, we will continue with these programs for our student success ESY that will run for 15 days, with June 19th being a non-attendance day. And that will be held at Libertyville High School. And then, our ELS and transition pathways program will run the same 15 days, with June 19th being non-attendance. And they get out an hour early to allow our students to attend special rec that they go to in the afternoon that is held within our community. All right, with that being said, I am going to turn it over to Mr. Stanley.
Thank you. So, back in the fall, we gave an update on some results from summer school. One of them included financials. And from that, I think it was important to look at what, what do we intend summer school to look like from a financial perspective? And so, over the last few months, doing some homework in terms of talking to other districts and thinking about what could your program look like, and what are some important decision points for that? I think the core of this is, what is the philosophy behind what summer school should be? I've shown you what it is, and that's showing that the program running at a deficit. If that's what we intend to happen, then we can continue to do that. But if the intention is to do something different, then my plan is to show you a variety of options that could do that. So, in terms of talking to other districts, some districts do a few things. We noticed in talking to some other districts, they make a distinction in terms of how much a student pays, based on why they're taking summer school classes. If they're taking them for initial credits, or some call it advancement, or versus the recovery side, or replacing, things like that, they make a distinction. Some districts don't. They charge the same. We have historically charged the same, no matter why they're taking summer school. It's been the same $200 fee for many years. Fee waiver students are, I believe, are exempted from having to pay anything for summer school. When the districts do make a distinction, more often than not, they don't charge for credit recovery. That's what we noticed, in terms of that. So, I think some of the idea is, what, what should be the philosophy? There are districts that intentionally run their summer school program at a deficit, doing exactly what we do, and that's what they mean to do, and they continue to do so. There are also many districts that intend to run it at a more cost-neutral standpoint, let the fees offset the costs as much as possible. And there are some districts that have a, that don't charge anything for fee waiver, or, excuse me, anything for summer school, and it's just part of their program. Now, what I noticed was, more often when they do that, the summer school program they're offering is only credit recovery. They're not offering credit advancement, which is what our system has offered. So, I think the idea is, what is the idea behind the intention? If the intention is to, if the intention is to have summer school be closer to cost-neutral, I can show you some options. If the intention is to have it be free, that's really easy to know what to charge people. If the intention is to continue doing what we're doing, then we don't need to talk much longer about what to do. So, I'm gonna show some options. This data that I'm gonna show you, the calculations are based on last year's summer school data, so I'm assuming the same number of students for the same reasons, just to illustrate the difference in the fees. So, as a reminder, the way ours is structured right now is, all the students pay, except fee waivers, so those are always excluded in all of these examples. Every student, no matter why you're taking it, pays $200. And so, therefore, if you look, that's the first line, and that's generating roughly $96,000 right now. If your, the intention is to get closer to cost-neutral, I can walk you through that. So, if everybody pays $300, that'll generate $144,000. If everyone pays $400, that'll generate $192,000. Now, here is what I found. Districts that intend to be closer to cost-neutral, end up charging close to $300,000, or $300 to $400 for summer school. That's what I found. Districts that intended to have a deficit, they were in the $200 range. They could be 200, 230, 250, but they were in that range. That's what I noticed. A third, a fourth, the fourth line there is a scenario that, all right, students that are taking it for reasons of credit advancement, or initial credit, sorry, that's how we have it worded, initial credits, they pay 400. But students that are looking to replace their grade, or recover, like retake, replace, or recover, they don't cost, they don't pay anything. That would generate $138,000. If you just allow the recover students free, so if you're taking it for recovery reasons, you're free, but otherwise, if you're initial credit or replace, retake, you're paying the full fee. That generates the $165. And the final scenario that I have highlighted in green is, all students, if you're taking for initial credit, you would pay 400. If the recovery students are free, and the students doing the replacement get half off. So, they would pay 200 for that. So, what, what fee program to look at depends on what your philosophy is. And that's not something I can tell you what your philosophy should be. I'm trying to give you data on what I've seen. This feels similar to the conversation around registration fees that we had last month, in terms of what's out there, and what I think some viable options are. I do want to make sure that I'm transparent and clear. There are, there are leaders in our organization that are very nervous about this fee changing. It has been the same for a very long time, and they're nervous about that, because that might affect the students that sign up for summer school. It might impact other things, in terms of even students signing up for classes now, or whatever. So, I just want to be clear, there are people that are nervous about this fee changing. I want to be transparent. The other thing is, if you wanted to look at changing the fee, you don't have to do it now. You can do whatever you want. You can say, all right, maybe, I'm just drawing out the options, maybe it could be, maybe you look at not changing the fee this year, but next year, we're gonna give people plenty of notice that this fee is changing. There's a lot of options. Or you can ramp into it. You can step in and be like, all right, Rome wasn't built in a day, neither was this, so we're gonna change this progressively over maybe a few years. I just want you to know, there's a lot of options out there. And I want to be clear that I'm communicating as transparently as I can, concerns that have been raised to me in terms of this process. So, with that, that's the information that I have for fees.
Yeah. No, that, I'm done talking. Thank you. The only other thing that I would add is, the highlighted one there is just one that resonates with many of the conversations we've had in the past about making sure that students, because when we talk about credit recovery, that students having access to graduation requirements. And because we are obligated to make sure every student has what they need to earn their diploma, that would be one recommendation I would strongly make, is that we continue to not have, which we have in the past, been charging students $200 to have a second access to a graduation requirement. I would recommend that we discontinue doing that. That is our responsibility, that's what taxpayer dollars should be used for, is to continue to ensure that each student can reach graduation requirements. The students who are electing to take courses in the summer to either free up other electives, or for other family reasons, it makes sense for them to elect to take get-ahead credits or initial credits in the summer. That is not what our education funding model is based on. Our education funding model is based on students having a certain number of courses per year, and this is in addition to that. So, I just wanted to put it in some of the conversations we've had in the past. The green highlight would be the recommendation for what we know school funding is supposed to be used towards, what we say we value in our equity policy, but then also the idea of having it be something that we haven't raised our summer school fees since, I think, 2009, I think it was 12?
I know it's been the same since at least 2010.
Yeah.
I don't know.
And we, and we know the cost of educating students have gone up. But that would be why our only recommendation was to increase the cost for the students who would be choosing to take additional initial credit courses only, and to not have fees for students who would be taking any credit recovery.
Dr. Herman, can I ask, I'm curious to hear your thinking on the students who are taking summer school for recovery credit to meet graduation requirements. Is there any risk of disincentivizing a student to be successful during the school year because summer school is free?
I don't think there's a teenager I know who would want to give up their summer break to take summer school to access a free course. So, no, I think the, the, the cost is only a barrier for students being able to take it or not. Having another option to take a summer school class being free instead of costing $200, I don't see in any way. Dr. Ellis Bowen, would you agree with that, that you can't imagine a summer school student failing a course, or a student failing a course because it's free over summer?
Yes. So, for our credit recovery students, no. And I've seen the model in other school districts in which it's completely free. The only thing, and the one thing that I will say, that we do a really good job of is with our criteria for summer school. So, with our attendance, what they are expected to do during summer school, and making sure we stay consistent with that, I think that we would not have that issue. And we don't have a lot of students who are in credit recovery, like, we're not busting out the doors for it. So, most of our students who come and take summer school are a lot of our students who choose to do get-ahead, so.
Great, thank you. I appreciate both of your perspective on that.
I have a quick question, just to confirm. The top line is what we're doing now?
Pretty much, okay.
And then, the bottom line would be free for those recovery, credit recovery students? It would be the same prices they're paying now for the replacement courses?
Yes.
And then, the rest of the?
The get-ahead.
The get-ahead would be the $400. And it doesn't, to your point, it doesn't look like, or to Iman's point, it doesn't look like there's a huge number if the gap between all paying 400 and the recovery-free replace half-off is only $12,000. So, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't seem like it's a huge impact, both financially for us, but it could be a big impact for those students wishing to get credit recovery. I think this would be an incentive for them to, you know, for those students struggling to be able to, to complete.
Would someone mind differentiating between retake and replace versus recover?
So, repeat and replace. So, it has two definitions. Repeat and replace, you're a student, you take social studies, you get a C. You feel that you could have gotten a B. You retake it to replace the grade. So, you receive the credit, but you just want a higher grade. Whereas, recovery, credit recovery means, I failed the class, I did not get the credit. And so, that's the difference between the two.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask? We had a slide about courseware versus instructional course. How is it determined who's in a courseware tract and versus who's in the instructional course?
That's a great question. So, with, with that, there is an online request for student, where they fill it out. And then, based on the recommendation from the counselor, having some conversations with the student, that's how we determine whether or not that student is going to take the courseware course, or if it's instructional. The only difference during summer school is that, in the event, we do not have a staff member who is available to teach that course. And we make the decision to go strictly online, it will be an instructional course.
So, I share the curiosity to dig into the details of the offerings and the curriculum. And I think what I would love to hear, though, let's take a step back, instead of getting into the weeds on summer school, and talk about the philosophy. Because I think it's most important to start with, what is our approach to what summer school should be in our district?
I think that's, my question before may have seemed a little obvious, but I just wanted to clarify, so that personally, I could kind of place value, and kind of weigh that also with this idea that we may be operating in some type of summer school deficit. Is that the word that we used just before? Sure. But I, Denise, I appreciate how you framed that, it's the charge of the district to educate our students and promote them in a timely manner that, you know, matches their age and stage. And so, personally, I, I would feel it's completely unfair to charge our students for recovery, or for retake, help. Retake and replace.
Repeat and replace.
Repeat and replace.
It took me a while.
R and R. R and R is what I'm gonna call it for short. And so, I think, I think that's a really noble effort to encourage for students, is if you're not duly satisfied with the performance you just put forth, we are here to support you in that endeavor and in making an improvement. I love the message that that sends. And I don't think we want any student to feel that it is not within their family's ability to afford to do their best through our institution of public education. So, for me, that, that seems very, not obvious, but it seems like it would be a good decision to not charge our students who are looking to R and R, or to recover. Those that are interested in simply just kind of, so to speak, get ahead of their schedule a bit and create space in their schedule, I don't know what the answer to that, like, personally is for, in terms of fees, what's appropriate and what's not. But certainly, I think a fee is appropriate in that regard.
Can I offer just one context on the word deficit? I just, so I just want to be transparent, that's, that's the word that I use when I'm talking about the money going out is exceeding the money coming in. I want to be clear that, that, that's looking at it as a programmatic on its own. For example, I don't come back to you and show you the exact same thing for our regular education programming, running at a $90 million deficit, because the users don't pay for it. That's just not how it works. So, it very also could just be viewed as, this is the net service cost to run this program as a service. So, I just want to, the deficit is just my, my way of trying to communicate, just similar how we looked at community education, for example, isolated of itself. You also can have a philosophy that this is just part of the service that you offer, and the fees might help offset that cost. So, I just want to be clear on the, in terms of the word deficit, may not be exactly the right word. It could be just net service cost.
Yeah. I think sometimes we tie deficit to this overall negative idea. And, and it's, while maybe in definition it is, it's not in this case where it's a cost, sure, but the yield of that expense on our behalf is quite worthy, if that makes sense? Is that kind of how you wanted to, I mean, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Just the idea that, what I'm saying is, because, because I have a phrase that the program's running at a deficit, that doesn't necessarily mean that's a bad thing that you have to fix.
Right.
It could be running at a deficit, because this is part of the services we intend to offer, and it never will. It's just the net cost of our services are more than zero.
It's a deficit in a vacuum, basically.
That's a good way of putting it.
I think we should tend towards self-sustaining. I think that the initial credit students should pay a higher fee than we're paying now, because we haven't increased the fees, whether that's 300 or 400, or whether that's this year or next year, it doesn't matter. I think that should go up. And I'm on the fence about credit recovery. I can understand why they should have to pay some fee, because we gave them the opportunity to do it during the regular school year, and for whatever reasons, that didn't happen. I can also understand Kara's point, that if they're trying to better themselves, then why would we charge them a fee for that? So, I'm on the fence there. Absolutely, replete and replace should not be charged a fee. So, philosophically, did I say repeat, replace? I'm sorry. Absolutely, the credit recovery should not.
Yes, yes.
We're new with these. Credit recovery should not have to pay. So, I think we're, we're trying to tend towards, what's our philosophy here? Are we in agreement that an increase in fees is necessary, one? And two, if it is, who would pay that? And I think the kids that are taking classes in the summertime to advance their schedule, to open up a free period, or whatever, they should, they should have to pay for that.
So, I'll just clarify my, my prior response, to make sure that we're all in agreement, not all in agreement, but that I'm clear. The, I agree with you, the recovery, I don't feel that they should be penalized for that, that I don't think we should put that roadblock. The repeat and replace?
Yes.
You know, there, there, I also agree that there might be an interest in some fee for that, maybe not the full fee, but there, that is a benefit to them, that really, they already have the credit, so it's, it, that's only going to help them improve their GPA. The one thing that I want to make sure is, as is listed here, the fee waiver students would not have to pay. And that, I want to make sure that that's all.
Regardless of category.
Regardless of what it is.
Agreed.
They should not have to pay.
So, it'd be, not only via the fee waiver, our students that receive fee waivers, but also our McKinney-Ventor students would not pay either.
Of course.
Thank you. That's an important clarification.
So, I did want to think from the philosophy of, when you look at summer school, right? Regardless of what they are trying to achieve with it, whether they are trying to get ahead, or they're doing R and R, these students are the ones who are investing their time during summer. These are teenagers who are investing their time during summer for education. So, from a philosophy perspective, I think there should be some incentive for them to do it. And by keeping the fees the same, and not charging for the, the R and R, we are actually incentivizing them to put some time towards their education, better yourself, whether you're trying to do it for advancement, then keep the fee the same for the advancement, just from a philosophy perspective. But that's an incentive, that your fees have stayed the same for a long time, because we want to incentivize you to study. And then, if you want to replace, and you want to get your grades better, then that's also an option, and we are not charging much for you. You're, you actually are investing your time, and we appreciate that. That's a good message to send to the students.
Kara, did you weigh in on your philosophy?
Well, I would love to see it more as a cost-neutral, but we said, what is our philosophy? So, I went to our policies, and I went to our philosophy. And we have a strategic plan that says, we want our students to take multiple paths. And if advancing offers them the ability to take experiences with multiple paths while they're in their classroom, that kind of fits with what our philosophy is. So, I tend to lean towards making it more incentivizing for those students to participate. I would not agree to a, almost, I don't think that our, we should be making I would not agree to a almost, I, I don't think that our, we should be making a hundred percent increase in one year. I mean, eventually getting maybe to a place of neutral. But I could see how keeping our costs somewhat similar under the auspices of our students having opportunities during the school year that they would not otherwise have. But my inclination is to keep it more of a cost neutral. I did have a question though about the numbers and if I'm reading it wrong. The highlighted number assumes that recovery students would be free and replace students would pay half. So the number above it would assume that recovery students are free and replace students would be paying the full. So wouldn't that generate more income? Why would it, why would replace students generate only 180 versus paying half versus if they were paying the full of them making one of us netting 165?
I, I think that I have a mistake.
Are those two should be flipped, right?
I think they're flipped.
Unless the number.
400 is 192.
I, I, I think truly what I think that, what I think that line is, is I think mathematically what that is, is that the recovery and replace are half off. I, I mean, when I'm looking at the numbers, I think that's mathematically what's happening.
But I think it depends on how many of our existed 2023 students were recovery versus how many of the 23, 23 students were R and R. I think that could affect.
There were very, very few R and R students.
They were the same. The, the, if you look at the, the data below, both were 77.
Oh, oh.
So they, they were the same.
No, but I'm just saying, I mean, if the highlighted line assumes that R and R are paying half and the number above it assumes R and R is paying full, then
Yeah, they're backwards.
One above it should be more income, more, should net more. So are we talking more going from, if we were to only have free for recovery? I, I mean, I know it's.
I, I think, well.
The two titles are flipped, I think.
I think they're flipped because what, what recovery free means is the repeat and replace pay the full rates.
Mm-hmm.
And and then the bottom, I, I think the numbers in those are, I think those numbers on those lines are flipped because the idea is if the recover are free, the replace, the replace would be half off and they would be, be paying 200, which is half of it. So I think those bottom two lines are just, the numbers are flipped.
Are flipped.
The titles don't match.
So if we were to say free for recovery and replace, it would be generate a net 138 versus if we were to say replace is half off, that would be the 165.
Right.
Which is still significantly more than the 96 that we're already generating, but not really closing the gap to the 309. I mean, somewhat, but.
Yeah. And I, I think I agree with the sentiment that we need to, I'm not even sure that for me it's relevant whether we're closer to break even. I think my concern is, I, I appreciate you bringing this conversation to us and giving us a chance to talk about the board philosophy. I think it's our responsibility to update the fees generally. I think that because our costs have gone up so much, the scenario that I might suggest is not to change it for this summer. And to, as Dan suggested, perhaps make it very clear that next year it will be 300 and the year after that it will be 400. But the recovery students will be free. Fee waiver and McKinney Vento students will be free. And retake and replace would be half off. That, that would be the scenario that I, I, I think is the most fiscally responsible, that still supports students who need to graduate, supports students who want to get a better grade and supports students who want to get ahead. Because even in the third year, when the fees go up to 400, it is still for summer school, it, 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 it's a nominal fee that I think has to be updated because our costs have changed so much since the last time we've updated them. It's been, it's been more than 10 years since we've, since we've updated them. So that would be my.
While we're talking about a, you know, doubling the fee, which sounds drastic, I'm sure the cost of this program has probably increased far more than that. It'd be interesting to, to know what it costs to operate the program back then. But I agree that rolling it in slowly, you know, over a three-year period of time. But to get the recovery in the free category right away, keep the fee waiver in place, I think that's a, that's a really good place to start. We're not shocking anyone by doubling it right away.
Right.
Yeah.
And if we include that in our registration materials, that this year the fees are not changing, but in the next two years they're changing, it gives people plenty of notice to plan ahead.
Actually, in theory, they, they're changing because we're allowing recovery students to not pay. So the 96 will actually go down.
Right.
For the first year, but then start to rain back up. Which is fine. From my perspective, that's fine.
So I, one nuance I want to just clarify. What it sounds like is basically the, the, the structure you're talking about is this year you start at 200, next year you go to three and then four for the next few years. And in that scenario, recovery are free and then half off for the repeat and replace. Are, would you like that to be for this summer? That you have, keep the fee at the 200, the recovery is fee that you've already mentioned, but then repeat and replace for this summer be half off? Implement that now, you know what I mean? Like you have the opportunity to do that. And then you're just basically implementing, rolling that system out over the next three years that, so you will see, you'll essentially see a dip for this summer, all else being equal. And then you will see this progress over the next three years. And after three years or four years or whatever, we can review it again to see, see what's happening.
Yeah. I mean, I'm comfortable with our net going down this year because over the course of three years, we are working towards something that I think is more in line with the philosophy we've articulated. And it, it accounts for how much our expenses have, have gone up without being punitive. But even though it'll go down this year, it will be more reflective of the philosophy that I, that I, I think I'm hearing us articulate tonight.
The only thing I would say is that from a communication perspective, we'll have to manage it where the messaging is going out in multiple channels. That, that will, that is coming. Because regardless of whether we've increased the fees or not for so many years, people don't look at that. The, it, it's just human tendency to look at it went from 200 to 400. People don't look at it like 200 was actually a deficit for the district and how we were operating and operating costs haven't increased for 10-plus years. So it's just, we need to get the attention to that as much as possible in multiple channels. And again, highlight that they've not gone up. We are gradually increasing it, but we are also rolling out some incentives in here where we are talking about the recover and then the R and R credits that people are getting. So it's, it's still helpful for the students.
Yes. And I, I appreciate your attention to communicating this effectively, which leads me to a question. Dr. Ellis Bone, have we changed what we offer significantly from last year to this year? And we, do we have any plans to significantly change what we're offering in the years that we're going to implement the fee structure change? Because I think the question then becomes, well, what are we getting for what we're, what we're paying?
So thank you, because you lead me into the next slide. So for this year, we will not be offering Summer Academy for our general education students. We will offer it for our students with student services, but we won't be offering it for our general ed students. The reason being is that the committee is in need of doing an evaluation and going through, again, philosophy, what do we want that program to look like? Conducting a, a program evaluation to see exactly if it was beneficial and collecting that data and then making some recommendations as to how we can approve upon an academy if the recommendation continues for it to be offered for the next year, which I am a hundred percent certain that we will be coming to you with that recommendation.
Can you just define what is Summer Academy? And is that something we've offered in the past?
Yes. So Summer Academy is the bridge program that we offered for our incoming eighth graders coming into school. It was that 15-day or three-week program that we offered during first session of students coming in and they would receive services or instruction in math or, or in math and English. And these were some of our students that may have came to us with some deficits. And that was our bridge program. One of the things that we noticed as we had began to look at summer school or summer school sessions was that we haven't had that opportunity of looking at doing a program evaluation and benefiting. One of the things that stood out when we collected the data was that there was a decrease in participation for those students. And then when we began to look for data, we didn't have a lot of data to really look at. So as a team, we want to have that opportunity to go back and really take a look at that. And then also as part of that, now knowing that we are moving towards the heterogeneous classes for our incoming ninth grade, that will also give us some additional data of how we can prepare for our students coming into D128 for that next class that's coming in. So in addition to us doing that program evaluation for our general ed section of that summer school session, we also as a team plan to continue to look at our recruiting and hiring of in-person summer school staffing, also looking at opportunities, credit-bearing opportunities for ninth graders. So right now, we don't have a lot of classes that we offer for incoming ninth graders to come in and get ahead. So that would be another option that we'll look at. So like offering health or offering elective that students can come in and just really get excited about coming to D128 as a high schooler. And then last but not least, also as part of that internal evaluation is again, looking at our, our school, summer school schedule and how we can continue to expand services during that time.
Can I ask one more question? Just so I am, I'm clear. Are there any limitations to the retake and replace as far as grades?
So the only limitation is that you can only do repeat and replace one time. That's it. You only have one time to, to do it. You can't do it multiple times to get to the grade you can't want to get to.
And you're necessarily limited by what's offered in summer school? So our students don't have the opportunity to do that with all of their classes?
Well, yes and no. Because if it's, if they choose to do it in person, then they have to do it with, within the courses we offer through summer school. But they can do repeat and replace through online.
Ah, okay.
It shows that all of them did repeat and replace online last summer.
Yes.
So they, and we did have a large catalog to choose from.
Yes.
Right? So.
And that might be the case this year again. Because we don't offer a lot of courses during, during summer school.
Well, so now where do we go from here?
We will use this feedback and move forward in implementing the program as, as we just discussed.
So is that something we'll vote on at the board meeting?
We typically have not voted on summer school fees in the past.
Well, I don't know what you voted on because it's been a long time since.
Yeah.
But especially with like your fees for this summer are going down. Are you really, really what you're doing is you're just not trudging for credit recovery and you're giving repeat and replace half off?
We could bring that back as a recommendation to the next meeting, just to make it formal.
Yeah. I think sometimes even if you're not required to vote, having us vote gives us the opportunity to say we support this and.
Yep.
Okay, moving on to harassment investigation procedures. And for some reason, that's not updating for me.
It seems like, yeah, it seems like the board docs is having some issues.
Yeah, they're fleshing it out.
Yeah.
If you look at the screen, it'll be there too.
On the screen, yeah.
Okay.
All right. So again, thank you for receiving this presentation. Today, I am excited to bring forth to you our harassment, intimidation, bullying and investigation administrative procedures along with Mr. Larry Varne and Mr. Brian Kelly. So as part of this presentation, we are going to go over what we have called HIBD. So we don't have to say all of those long words over and over again for our students as well as our staff. So I'm just going to speak to some alignment and we're going to talk about reporting and then we'll get into the depths of these administrative procedures. So one of the things that as a team we wanted to do was to create some administrative procedures for our harassment, intimidation, bullying and discrimination for both students and staff. It is of the utmost importance that there is some alignment between what is in our current, in our board policies, also what is currently in ISB guidance, as well as new guidance that is fresh off the press as well, as of two weeks ago. So throughout this presentation, we'll speak to that alignment for our staff and then the alignment for our students.
So we're going to start with how to report a concern. And there are three main mechanisms that allow staff and students to report concerns in the building. The first way is by contacting a complaint manager. They can do that either by phone or by email. And what you see here is the signage that will be placed throughout the buildings that will allow students and staff to know how to report these concerns. The second way is by telling a trusted adult. They can report it to any adult, any employee, D128 employee within the building. Or they can scan one of the three QR codes that are there. If they report it to a complaint manager or a trusted adult, it will still end up in, in the third column, being reported into one of these forms. It's just a matter of who's putting it in. They can do it themselves or they can report it to someone else who will put it in there for them. And so they can report bullying if they are experiencing a situation where they are, they are either witnesses to or victims of bullying. Same with harassment. If they are experiencing some sort of harassment that may be considered a form of discrimination based on their identity. Or if they want to report safety concerns, something that may be deemed a threat to the buildings and grounds or, or just a concern that they have that may be a safety concern within the building.
And so currently, we have on all of our websites access for people to report bullying. And that's how it's labeled, "Report Bullying." And I think there's some confusion on, you know, what is bullying and where does bullying, you know, what does that fall under? So, and we do have QR codes around the billing to report bullying and it goes to one, one Google form that then is, that information is sent to both schools and the district office. But as Larry said, what we do want to do is expand to three ways to really report. The information would be filtered the same way and be sent to the buildings and to the district office. But delineate, hey, you know, you can report bullying, you can report harassment, which could be racial, sexual or gender-based. And, or you can report just a general safety concern. Some people get confused. They think bullying and it doesn't really fall in that way. And maybe they don't want to go to adults. Maybe they may hit the question button on the website and those emails go to Mary. So we want to open that up and have these three areas that people could report. Currently, we do have a school safety website under our district office. Currently, we do have a school safety website under our district office website, but these, what we'll do is we're going to change it on the school's website that there is a dropdown menu that says, "Report Bullying." It's going to say, "Report a Concern." That then will be clicked on to another landing page that you have the option to report one of these three options, again, bullying, harassment, safety, with a little bit of explanation for all of those. So it's just expanding that bullying phrase. And again, this can be accessed from all of our school websites. The QR codes will be placed around school. Even if we have an old QR code that somebody accesses, it'll still go to our bullying form. So it's not like that QR code is non-existent anymore. So, and again, we get those right now, all the time from students. So I do know they know where to find them. We get them from, they could be athletic events, they could be on the bus, they could be at home. So I know they're getting it, we're just trying to expand their ways to access that.
And if somebody fills one of the three choices out, where does it go?
So it goes to all of our, so it goes to myself as the Title IX Coordinator. It goes to our complaint managers in the buildings, which is Assistant Principal, and then one of our team leaders. But it goes to all the team leaders, it goes to the principal, all the system principals. So if somebody submits, when a student submits a bullying report, there's probably, off the top of my head, 15 of us that get it. And so there's checks and balances.
So it's both the district and the building?
Yeah, so, and I read it right away when I see it. And we have in our form, we also, people have to fill out what the follow-up was. So immediately, we see if somebody's on it, the team communicates who's following up on it. And so, you know, if somebody's out sick one day, it's not like the whole system falls apart. There's a lot of eyes and ears on it. So if somebody reports something at Libertyville or a transition, we all see it together because there is crossover and there, you know, could be a situation that's happening in Libertyville or Vernon Hills that may affect our other students. So they're, both schools are aware of it at the same time.
And so that point of receipt is an important point that you make. And so what happens? If 15 people across the district receive the complaint, one of those individuals, the first one to receive it, then notifies an investigator. And they determine who that person is based on the type of complaint that it is. So all of those 15 individuals would have been trained on receiving the complaint that comes in and assigning it to the appropriate investigator. And so any Title IX complaint that comes in, regardless of who it involves, will be sent to our Title IX Coordinator, our Associate Superintendent. And then when it comes to bullying, intimidation, and harassment, depending on the persons involved, whether it's staff to staff, or whether it involves students coming from a student or involving a student, it would determine which of the investigators that is assigned to discrimination. And then with our safety concerns, those will go to Assistant Principal for Operations. So that's how we filter and then make sure that the appropriate administrator is notified of the complaint and begins to start the formal investigation process.
So it's a manual process? Somebody actually does have to assign it to a person? And what would you say, estimate the turnaround time from a complaint being made to being assigned?
One school day. Within one school day.
Within, thank you.
So then I want to talk about our staff procedures. And again, just, you know, why, you know, why do we have procedures? Why do we have these policies in place? Again, we're committed to providing a safe, welcoming, secure, working, and learning environment that's free from discrimination, harassment. And it is defined in a lot of our board policies for our Uniform Grievance 2260 to Title IX 2265, to our Prevention of Harassment 520, 720, and 7180. And I know you guys are well-versed in this for a lot of the education that we've done. But these board policies come from, you know, the school code and they drive, you know, really the things that we put in place and then also our procedures and following up on those. You know, part of that commitment is also that not only creating an environment, but also treating people with dignity and respect, that everybody, again, will be in an environment that's free from harassment, intimidation, and bullying. We also have where if somebody reports something, that there isn't retaliation to the person reporting it, there's not retaliation back to witnesses. And are all of our policies that I just mentioned, mention, you know, they cite that if there is retaliation, that there will be consequences for that also. So, you know, when I get into looking at our investigative steps for staff, if we get an initial report or collection, one of the things we'll do is we will, we will communicate back to whoever, you know, put in their complaint. So we will communicate back to them that we've received their complaint. And so they'll get a email. The way our system is with staff, the easiest way is to send an email, "We've received your complaint and we're going to start the investigation process." There may be some immediate safety measures that we need to put in place. And again, thinking back to that retaliation piece, knowing where that is, you know, we'll look at any immediate safety measures for that staff member to, again, ensure that they can come into a working environment free of harassment. We'll then begin the formal investigation. And again, who's doing the formal investigation? A lot depends on who the staff member is. Is it, you know, staff to staff? Is it staff and students? But a lot of that, you know, we'll start with our assistant principals. When we start involving maybe some students in there, that might be witnesses or other staff members, then we'll look at what administrators are involved in that process. If it's staff members, then we also notify our union as part of our Collecting Bargaining Agreement, that they would have a union representative, you know, there during those meetings. When we're investigating, we're looking at students as witnesses, again, we'll contact parents ahead of time that we need to talk to their son or their daughter. Our team leaders are well-versed in talking to students. Sometimes we may bring in also, again, depending on the situation, social worker involved. If we have a larger staff investigation, we could also involve, if we need to, outside counsel. So our attorneys, you know, could be brought in. We try to obviously do everything internal. But again, depending on the situation, the severity, we may involve outside counsel to actually do formal investigation. But what we do, and we do, you know, questioning the complainant first and getting some of the background information, finding out any other witnesses, or then also the other person involved, we'll set all of our questions kind of ahead of time. We'll review those questions with our attorney to ensure that we're asking the correct questions and that we're not asking anything that we shouldn't be asking. Then we'll analyze, you know, all of the information that we received. A lot of times, again, we'll be in discussions with our attorney to, you know, see what our remediation should be, seeing what our action plan should be. And again, you know, remediation is key, is we always want to, again, create an environment that people can feel safe coming to work. So there may have to be things that are put into place, but we also know that we want to work with the individual, you know, that made their, you know, actually harassed another employer or harassed a student and see if we can remediate them. And that may involve some, you know, time to sit down with either Larry or bring an outside person in to mediate with people, because again, we want to get to a better place. Our goal is, just with our students, just like our staff, is for people to educate them and to improve. And then obviously, with staff also, and you'll see that as Aman goes through the students, is that we will document and follow up on anything. So if we ask somebody that they have to do some further education, they have to follow up, we're going to follow up with them to ensure that they've taken the correct measures. Also, at the same time, we'll follow up with the first person that was the complainant to ensure that they still feel safe and that there hasn't been any retaliation, that there hasn't been any further harassment, and if there's any accommodations that they need coming to work. So looking at our student procedures, Aman?
All right. Would it help if I have the mic? Okay. So one of the things that, again, I stated at the beginning of our presentation is that we did some alignment, not only to our policies, our reporting mechanisms, ISB guidance, but we also tried to also do some alignment between how investigations and our administrative procedures occur with not only our staff, but there's also some alignment with our students. However, there are some certain criteria that for students we have to follow. And I will highlight what those criteria, what the criteria will be. So similar to our commitments for our staff, we also have our commitments to our number one stakeholders, our students. And we want to make sure that they are safe, they are protected, but then also that they have the feeling of belonging and they have, and that they feel comfortable with knowing that they are in a environment where there are some caring individuals. So we will do our utmost to ensure that their educational environment is not disrupted from any bullying or intimidation or harassment. Before you, I have the definition for student bullying from our ISB, our Illinois General Assembly. Again, that just goes into how bullying, harassment, intimidation can be, can cause not only physical but psychological and emotional harm, but then also too, some of the outcomes or the results of when a student has been bullied that can lead them to vandalism or shoplifting or even substance abuse. So this is another reason why we commit it, because we want to make sure that our students are successful. This next slide goes through our protective classes. And our protective classes are not here only just for our student bullying, but this also applies to our staff as well. So we want to make sure that we take in consideration our protected classes. So for the next slide, when we're looking at student bullying, student bullying, we are just not looking at the, during the eight to two, when our students are in our building. When we are looking at bullying, we are looking at any school-sponsored events. We are looking at the transmission of information from a school computer or a school device. But we are also looking at bullying through the transmission of a non-D-128 computer or a personal device. However, when the, the discipline, no, the behaviors begin to disrupt our school environment, then we have to address it. So even if it happens in the community, it happens over the weekend, if it comes back to us, we have a responsibility to make sure that we are addressing it. So similar to what Mr. Kelly stated in regards to our investigative steps, however, the first difference I want to point out to you is that we have 24 hours per ISB guidance to make sure that we notify all parents and guardians involved. So that is for the victim and the accused, as well as any of our students who may have witnessed the event. So that is one difference that you will see between the investigative steps. However, it was moved down, we take a look at immediate safety measures. So we're looking at our environment to see if there is anything that will cause additional harm or impact. We conduct the initial report collection within the first, within those first two days of that 24 hours of reporting it to the parents. Then we begin the formal investigation. In the formal investigation, we are making sure that we are talking to witnesses, we're talking to the accused, we've talking to the victim. But we are also, throughout this process, keeping our parents updated. And that's another criteria or guidance that has come out from ISB as well too. Not giving them the specifics regarding it, but keeping them abreast of how the investigation is going. And at any point, parents can request a meeting to discuss the events that are happening as well as the investigation. Then we're doing analysis and conclusion. And in this area, we also take into account if the student had received services, if they are a 504 student or a special, a student with special services, because we also have to make sure that the IEP team is, or the 504 team is involved. Then we go through resolution and action plan. And so this can look a number of different ways. It can be restorative conversations, it can be a resolution that we have, it could also lead to safety plans for our students. Also, as part of the process, throughout this process, for the victim, we also have to identify social, emotional services for that student in-house. So whether we're hooking them up with one of our counselors or social workers, but this may also include us looking at outside organizations to make sure that they have that social, emotional, and mental health services as well too. And then similar to the staff, we are looking at that documentation and follow-up as part of that and making sure that as we are documenting and following up with all parties and making sure that communication has been had with all stakeholders involved, that we as a system or organization is looking at ways to improve our process. So if you can go to the next slide? Again, student-specific guidelines, and I kind of highlighted them, the 24-hour notification to parents, also services to the victim, so looking at social, emotional, and mental health support for our victims, involvement of our special services or 504 teams, implementations of interventions for our students after the investigation had concluded, the required time to complete the investigation. So we have 10 days to complete the investigation for our students. We align that with our staff as well too. But in the event there may be an unforeseen circumstance that, in which the 10 days may not be met, the team can make a request to the superintendent for an additional five days to complete that investigation. If she is to approve that extension, then the team has to notify everyone involved, including the parents. Again, we have a really strict retaliation portion of our administrative procedures. And then the additional difference between the staff and the student is that there is an appeal process, which first begins with the principal office, but the parent, if the principal was involved, then it will go to the district office, to the superintendent. Last but not least, also part of new guidance that is hot off the press, is how we communicate our policies regarding students. So we are obligated to make sure that we have this within our, accessible through our websites, it is on our student handbook, and then it is throughout our building. Also, we have to make sure that we are reviewing our policy throughout the year with our parents, with our staff, and then with any newly hired D-128 on an annual basis. Also, as part of this, we have to also evaluate our processes and procedures. And so as part of this evaluation, it will be a committee of diverse stakeholders that will be led by the Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, in which we would, again, look at our policies and procedures. And as part of this, we also have to collect some data to make sure that we are evaluating our policies and procedures. So this data will be how many reports of bullying that we had, our victims. A lot of this data that we collect will, again, align with what we have to report for our civil, Office of Civil Rights report that we have to do. several, Office of Civil Rights report that we have to do. And then last but not least, annually, there will be a report just on the evaluation to the Board of Ed. So with that being said, any question?
I thought it was fantastically thorough. So I don't have any questions, any more?
No, just to thank you for putting together something so important and writing, so there are no surprises, and everybody knows they're protected here. I really, really thorough, thank you.
So along with policy, this is one of those administrative procedures. So there's a few of those things that are like similar to policy, this is one of those things. Okay, I have no access, so I think the next thing was student travel?
Ed tours.
Yes.
Yeah, ed tours is the next thing.
And there were like five of them.
There are five.
And I liked them all.
I did not have any questions when I reviewed the five. We have five LHS field trips.
Okay, if there aren't any questions about...
I have a question, but for some reason my...
Mine is actually loading, do you remember which trip it was? And I can pull up...
I'm pretty sure it was DECA, LHS DECA.
There's LHS DECA, LHS mock trial to Springfield, and now it just disappeared.
Hey! Mine just popped up, but not my commentary.
Oh, no, it did.
The DECA one was the Distributive Education Club of America to Rosemont, is that the one you had questioned?
Yeah, okay, I found it. LHS DECA, at the time that I looked at it, certainly it may have changed in the last 24 to 48 hours, it just disappeared again. Goodness me.
I'm gonna try and go from memory. I think there were some holes in the itinerary in terms of like time of leaving campus, returning, transportation, accommodations, just more detailed information on that, but then additionally, the form, there it is again, let's cross our fingers. Cost to student is per student or split between 40. I assume that the math just wasn't done, it looked like a very costly trip per student in the form, but I'm pretty sure the intention was to split it. So it says the amount paid by Student Guardian is $8,578. In all the other forms, it's broken down per student, or I think that's typically how we receive the information.
Yeah, that's not per student.
Yes.
Right. I thought, I thought to myself, I think this is more costly than going to Italy, but...
No, that was a total. That was the, so on the source of funds, it has the totals on there.
Okay, cool. So if I looked at the calculation sheet, it's on there. Okay, cool. I just wanted to make sure that the form...
I see what you're saying, it does look like, wow, that's pretty expensive. But that is total cost.
I feel like I could get them to Rosemont cheaper.
Yeah, four seasons in Rosemont, perfect. Okay, thank you, that was just the only clarifications I needed to make on that DECA trip.
That was worthy of clarification, thank you.
Well, you're so welcome.
And if there aren't any other questions, we'll move on to item D, employment of employees, Bryant?
Correct.
If it'll load.
Mine, I have mine.
Okay.
I'll just...
They are listed on there.
Give a shout-out to Rita Lilydoll, who is going to be moving up as the assistant boys tennis coach.
There you go.
I know her, that's all.
Is there anything else? Mine just loaded, so any other questions on, those will be for approval at the board meeting February 26th.
Okay, then moving on to future agenda items. Is there anything that anybody would like to see as a future agenda item that's not listed?
Again, it's struggling to load, but I know in my commentary, either here or in FNF, I don't know where I wrote it, I would just, from the administration, I believe I even wrote Denise about this, but this was before, before the last week, just an update on the post semester one grading and assessment team pilot.
Yep.
Want to hear how it went?
Yes, we implemented surveys to the stakeholder groups in January, and we have those results, and also we should be able to share them with the Board shortly.
And then Bryant, I have a question, I don't know if it needs to be a future agenda item or not, but the community ed program that we had that we no longer have, there were a number of things that were done to try and assuage the fears of the community about no longer having access, and we had put some things into place. Would it be possible for you to give us an update on where we are? Like the wins, they're using our stage.
Absolutely.
Things are going okay with them?
Things are going great.
That was, they were very worried, they were our strongest opponent, so it's nice to hear that they're...
They had a great first semester with them, so I can give an update either at the next board meeting or the committee meeting, we'll look at our schedule.
That's fine, thank you. All right, and I will adjourn the PNP meeting.
Okay, do we want to take a five-minute or just keep going? Anybody?
I'm okay to keep going.
We're all okay to keep going? Okay. So then let's call to order the Facilities and Finance Committee. Have an invitation for public comment, would anyone like to address the committee? Does not look like it, okay, so we'll move on. First item on the agenda, LHS cafeteria project update.
Yes, good evening, thank you. I am here with Dan Stanley and Mark Koopman to talk and provide the Board with an update about the cafeteria and the other related projects that you have been aware that we've been in the planning stages for. This is a update to the presentation that was delivered to you back early in the fall when we first began discussing the possibility of addressing the LHS school cafeteria, some of the bathrooms, and the learning and gathering stairs as related to this project. I don't have the control of you, thank you. Yes, so just as a reminder to you as a Board and to our community, very quick summary, we, back in October, discussed the need at LHS to renovate and enlarge our school cafeteria. It's a 70-year-old facility, it's at the end of its functional lifespan, and we need to help it meet modern ADA codes, as well as be aligned to the student learning and health and wellness needs of our students and our staff as we move towards the middle half of the 21st century. We also needed to enlarge the space, the 380-student capacity puts us in a place where we only, where we must offer four lunch periods in order to serve everyone, that put constraints, constraints on the master schedule. So we were hoping to get our cafeteria redesigned to enable us to serve a larger number of students at a time to free up the flexibility we would have with our schedule. Along with this project was the goal to renovate and upgrade some of our school bathroom facilities. This would not be all of our bathrooms, but it would make a significant impact on our bathroom facilities. We would need to replace old bathrooms that would be removed from the cafeteria, we would be renovating existing bathrooms to make sure that they're aligned to ADA codes and to student needs, and then many of the bathrooms that would be addressed are 50 to 70 years old and at the functional end of their life, so we would be able to address those. And then finally, a third benefit of this project and focus area is to create the learning and gathering stairs in our main stairwell that would connect our first and second floor and serve as an overflow area for our student cafeteria, giving us more flexibility because we'd be able to serve more students in terms of lunch space, as well as giving us a very prominent meeting area for student events and programs. So I wanted to update you on the design process, because we've, since October, been working very hard with a number of different stakeholders to begin to design these projects. Since October, there, well, inclusive of October to this date in February, there's been 11 formal design meetings, and each of these meetings was one that was very collaborative where the architects and the professional designers would come in, they would listen to ideas from the educational staff, they would come back to the meeting with drawings, renderings, we would kind of go back and forth with them, and each meeting would build upon the previous one. In addition to these formal design meetings, District 128 administrators like Mark and Dan had separate meetings with architects, contractors, food vendors, just to kind of work on some of the details that were being discussed in the large group meetings. At the building level, we were having smaller meetings with different personnel to talk about questions that were raised in the larger design meetings. LHS students and staff representatives have been included in two of the large formal design meetings, so this is students and staff that go outside of the staff, it's part of the 11 design meetings, so we've had a lot of our, our B&amp;G and our administration involved in the formal meetings, but we've had two that have expanded that, where we have invited members of our staff who have different areas of expertise in terms of ADA accessibility and students with special needs, who have come in to consult with us. We've had a number of students from freshmen through seniors participating in these meetings as well. We have attempted to update all of our administration and our staff with, like my Wildcat Weekly, giving them a overview of the project. They haven't been updated on all of the granular details, but some large-scale, big-picture overviews have been presented. You may be aware, because they often come to this meeting, students in the Ecos Club have presented not just here, but they have been invited to present and attend many of the design meetings that have occurred, and they've been very focused on different types of sustainability options that may be a part of this project. And then our Parent Cats is a very strong group of parents who support a lot of the different things we do in the school. I attend their monthly meetings, and in November gave them an overview of these projects. So just as a quick review, some of the stakeholders who have been involved in the process since October, of course, our district administration, our LHS administration, members of our school IT, B&amp;G, and campus safety teams have been brought in at various points to discuss this. We've had staff representatives and student representatives, student representatives have been largely through the Principal Advisory Board, and we have a full committee there that is focused on this, and then our ECO students. And then in terms of professional partners, STR is our architectural firm, they have been fantastic in attending these meetings and being extremely responsive to the questions and the, you know, like after each meeting, we'll often say, we like this, but could you design this that shows us this? And could you design it a little bit with this in place? And they always come back to the next meeting with reporting out on those requests. Gilbeng Construction has been present to consult on the construction management aspects of this project, and Quest Food Services has also been present to talk about the food service perspectives. And then Mark, I don't know who the gentleman is that is the kitchen designer, the food service designer, if he's with STR or with a separate company, I couldn't find his...
Top of my head, I can't remember.
There's been a gentleman...
Edge. He's essentially a consultant with the architects, he's like a specialty for kitchens, things like that.
Like large-scale corporate kitchens and food service, they have a special consultant who comes in, who has looked at like our point of services and looked at the layout of the, the servery and said, yes, you're maximizing student use of this space, or he's anticipated where bottlenecks might show up, or where there'd be difficulty with the professional staff providing the food. We've found him to be very helpful, so I apologize that I didn't have him formally listed here. So I want to give you a, a project update of the status of these projects and the timeline, and I didn't put an asterisk on these, but big asterisk, that these are all very tentative and still in early stages of design and of timeline being sketched out. So with the bathrooms, we have six bathroom areas that will be renovated as part of this project. The first and second floor, what we're calling the quad bathrooms, so if you know the world language quad, there is a bathroom there, and right above it, where the science classes are, then the biology area, there is another group of bathrooms. So it is, the first and second floor bathrooms would be renovated, those are multi-use spaces, I'll get into that in a second. Outside of the cafeteria, across the hall from the cafeteria, there are some bathrooms that are existing, they're very old bathrooms, those will be completely renovated and partially be renovated to accommodate from the loss of bathrooms inside the cafeteria. These will now become our main bathrooms for the cafeteria use across from that. As part of that project, there are bathrooms inside the girls locker room that is in the hallway by where the training room is, and those bathrooms will also be renovated as part of this. And then there is a, an area that will be a single-use bathroom that will be completely renovated to be ADA accessible with our Hoyer lift. Right now, that bathroom is right near here, it's right near the studio theater. We brought in our school nurses, we brought in some of our staff members from our special services department, and in looking at the master layout of the building, they determined it would be much more advantageous and beneficial to students and staff to relocate that bathroom to this new location that would be designed as part of this project. So something to note, all of the bathrooms that are being designed and implemented will be designed to the multi-user, gender-neutral standards for the state of Illinois. So what that means is, we as a school will be able to still determine, is this a boys' bathroom only, is this a girls' bathroom only, or is this an all-gender bathroom? We will be setting our school master plan to have all three types of bathrooms. We will still have single-gender bathrooms for boys, single-gender bathrooms for girls, but we will have all-gender restrooms like we currently have. Those all-gender restrooms, however, will be multi-user. So right now, they are single-user, and that presents some safety and security challenges for a school. The new ones will be multi-user, meaning there will be multiple stalls in there that anyone can utilize, no matter how they identify their gender, okay? And so those are being designed with very specific standards that are being utilized across the state in public areas. Our architects are well-versed in this, but what we have there is inclusive signage. We have floor-to-ceiling doors, so instead of the stall doors that you might imagine where you can see your feet, and someone could stand up and kind of look over, they're designed with floor-to-ceiling dividers and a personal lock on those doors. The new codes have to include baby-changing stations as part of this, so that would be incorporated there. And then, again, as I mentioned, we as a school have maximum flexibility, and what we are doing is, we don't know how our bathroom needs will change over the years, but by designing all of our bathrooms to general neutral standards, it gives us maximum flexibility where we could say, hey, we need another girls' bathroom, so we're going to convert this one that was originally an all-gender or just a boys' to a girls' restroom, because we're building a new boys' restroom over here. In traditional design, a bathroom is designed to be a girls' only or a boys' only, and we have less flexibility of how we can utilize that if we wanted to change some of the usage of the bathrooms in the building. The timeline of this, we are currently, right now, selecting finishes with the design architects. So we have a group of students and staff looking at the finishes, looking at what the tiles would be, looking at what the materials would be, the finishes for the doors and for all of the sinks. We have our ECO students looking in with Mark and his team about what are the ways we could potentially save energy, whether that's through dual-flush toilets or whether... or whether that's through some of the low-flow types of sinks and things like that. But those decisions are all being researched and discussed at this time. If all goes according to plan, we would have a tentative construction schedule that could begin as early as this summer on the cafeteria hallway bathrooms across from the cafeteria. That includes the girls' locker room bathroom and the ADA specialized bathroom. So pretty much all of the bathrooms in the main hallway would be, started to be under construction this summer. Okay? Before I move on, any questions about the bathroom that either me or Mark would be able to answer?
Will we continue to utilize the current ADA bathroom that's in this library hallway? Or will that, sorry, will we continue to use the current ADA bathroom that's in the library hallway? So we'll have two.
Right, we would probably not have the Hoyer lift in there still. We only believe we need one of those. But we would probably continue to use that bathroom. It may convert to a staff bathroom and a nurse, the nurses' bathroom. For, there would still be student use, but it would often be with adult assistance. And we are in need of some staff-only bathrooms on the first floor. And so that is being discussed as that would convert to that use.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. We will move to the next project, which is the learning and gathering stairs. So these are designed to replace and enhance really the main stairwell outside of the main gym. So if you're standing at the main gym, these stairs would come into that foyer. The, if you know where the student activity director, Jen Ulix's office is, these stairs would open up to face her office. Right now, they face to the north. By turning, when we do this project, they would essentially face towards the east. This stairwell is designed to give us 66 to 68 student seating capacity, while still allowing for students to move up to the first and second floor. There are five ADA seats built into this. The code was two. It was very important to us that we maximized our ADA seating for our students and community. So there are five seats being built with companion seats, three at the top level and two at the bottom to, again, provide maximum flexibility for students and families with ADA needs. We have plans to include a multimedia presentation wall. So if you look at the bottom drawing on the right side, you'll see there's a bunch of brown squares on the white wall. That is sort of symbolizing where a multimedia display would be for student presentations and announcements and just sort of information that would be able to be displayed throughout the day or for specific programs. Our IT and AV team have been consulting with Mark and the architects on that. So that's being built in very much as part of the plan and would not be an afterthought. This connects our first and second floors. And there's a lot of design. We could not incorporate natural light due to the design of the building. We couldn't put a skylight there, that was researched. But we can incorporate a lot of natural materials and plants into that space to soften it and bring in a little bit more of an organic feeling. And then, like we said, at LHS, we don't have a central student gathering place in the way Vernon Hills does. This would become that place for us and allow us to have before-school, after-school, club meetings as part, near the main gym for athletic teams to gather and well as to be utilized, if we wanted, during the day for curriculum types of activities as well. We are currently in the process of consulting on the finishes. The architects have been bringing in different color schemes for us to look at. And if all goes according to plan, construction on this project would be summer of 2025. We believe this is a one-summer project, given the scope of it and everything like that. Any questions there?
I have just a quick question. Are these designed as separate projects or just different phases of one big project?
Different phases of one big project.
So that all the design work and stuff is happening, the CDD phases and stuff are all happening simultaneously?
All working in conjunction right now. They're working on roofing. We had a big meeting today discussing roofing and structure for the courtyard. We're working on the bid package for the bathrooms for the summer. Met with our abatement team this morning, finalized abatement and demo in the locker room area as well as washroom area. This presently the boys and girls over by the cafeteria.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And then the third component of this project is of course the cafeteria. It's our next slide, Dan. That's okay? So we have worked really hard and finally kind of created a final layout for our cafeteria. So the, it's just a quick review of the diagram on your right. The professional kitchen will be replacing the space that is currently the staff cafeteria. So it's at the north end of the drawing in kind of a pinkish-purple. It is then flows into the servary, which is yellow and has been designed to maximize student ability to enter and exit that space very rapidly. And then everything in green is the student seating areas throughout the existing footprint. Plus, where up there, we are building in a smaller kind of little café within the cafeteria. This will provide for a little bit of a smaller space for students, a little bit of a quieter setting, yet still being part of the main cafeteria, so students feel like they are included in that space. As we scroll down, that is our current courtyard space. That is going to be covered with a massive skylight that will cover both the staff cafeteria, which will be relocated there. Staff members will receive part of that skylight so that they will benefit from natural light in their eating space. And then the other portion of it will be on the student's side, so students will benefit from that skylight. We are told by the architects that this is actually a wonderful place for a skylight, given the north orientation. It will bring in a lot of natural light, but it won't bring in a ton of heat because it's not south-facing. And we were really pleased with the way the architects designed it to maximize the skylight for the, for everyone and making sure that our staff and students would have that as part of their eating and kind of relaxing spaces. There are natural plants as well being planned for the wall along the staff cafeteria to bring in more natural and organic materials. And then there are a number of recycling and waste stations being included. The student capacity increases to a minimum of 450. We could maximize, if we chose different furniture and we wanted to maximize students, we could fit about 480 to 490 in there. We lose some of the comfort and some of the community by doing that. So we believe 450 is a, is a good number that will balance the needs of the master schedule while still preserving student ability to be in more comfort and community with each other. The courtyard, as I mentioned, is covered. Now it becomes a permanent usage space. So instead of us using it for, you know, six weeks in the fall and four weeks in the spring, we get to use it year-round. All of our ADA accessibility is enhanced in this space. And we're trying to build in multiple student dining experiences in one space because students have different desires and how they want to spend their time and eat. There will be a coffee bar and drink station for students and staff, very similar to what Vernon Hills has. That's going to be, you see a circle on the east side of the drawing near the main entrance. That's basically where the coffee bar is, yeah, right over there. And we've worked really hard with the architects. The kids wanted to know, the Ecos students, can we include solar panels in the skylights? Can we include gray water capture? For this particular project, the architects studied that and said that is not either ideal for, like, the skylight is not ideal for the return on the investment if we put solar panels in because it's just not going to get enough sun to maximize the return. And the gray water capture here would be exorbitantly expensive given where this project is located. So what they told the students is, for an environmental standpoint, we are maximizing it based on all the new appliances we are getting that will be tremendously energy-efficient. All the materials we are using that will be environmentally friendly. But where the kids can really work with us as a, as a professional team is maximizing the recycling and the composting and the reusable materials. So our students now know that for this project, that is the biggest environmental impact we can make. And we have students studying, how are we going to maximize the recycling? How are we going to create actual composting options? And they're working with Mark and Dan on pricing that out. And then we've been working with Quest about, can we incorporate some reusables? So whether that's silverware or reusable types of food containers so that not everything is just plastic, throwaway, one-time-use. I don't have specifics yet on that, but as we come back to talk, that is something that we will be updating the board on. We know that is a value that you share as well. And that's where the environmental sustainability focus will be moving forward with this particular project. If everything goes according to plan, kitchen construction will start in December of '24 with the shutting down of the staff cafeteria and beginning to work on the kitchen while the current kitchen remains in operation. Then, when we move into spring of 2025, we would be shutting down the current student servary, setting up a servary, like a temporary servary in front of that. That would knock out some student seating, and we would have to find alternatives for students to eat. I told Mark, we've lived through COVID, we can figure this out. Like, we will come up with a plan for that. And then the student and staff cafeterias will really be under total construction during the summer of 2025. And so that project would be sort of the final phase of this. And I believe, Mark, the bathrooms in the quad would also be spring, summer of '25?
Would be summer of 2025 for the quad bathroom.
It's very exciting. Thank you to everybody that has been working so hard to maximize the improvements. I want to clarify something that I think you mentioned back in October when we initially discussed this. But it is not necessary to go to 480 capacity in order for us to go from four lunch periods to three. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
We think our minimum number is between 450, 430 at the very small end, but 450 is the target. If we know when we're there, then that gives us maximum flexibility with the schedule. And this is for a different report at a different day, but some of the schedules we're looking at even have the potential to just have one or two lunch periods for everybody that would also provide us with flexibility. So either way, no matter where our schedule settles, if we stay with exactly what we have for the near future, we would be able to potentially accommodate three lunch periods, which is just better for students because then they're not eating at 10:15 in the morning to 11:00. We would just serve, you know, starting at 11:00, but knowing we would be able to fit everybody in at a more normal lunchtime for them.
And could you also just mention the impact on learning and curriculum, what the students are able to learn if we don't have to have four lunch periods? How that might impact their schedule?
Well, it certainly impacts the ability for them to have more flexibility in what they can take and the ability for them to have off-campus experiences where lunch may not necessarily be something that we have to build in as much over the course of their day. It's like a student might get a third-period lunch, which causes them to have difficulty accessing certain, certain programs. So that's our, our goal is to create maximum flexibility for the schedule for staff and for students so that these constraints don't limit what a child can do or what a staff member can offer.
Thank you.
Can they eat on the stairs?
Yes. So our campus team is sweating that one. They're a little worried about that. We, we will probably have to have, obviously, some type of supervision there.
Sure.
But there would just be some shifting of some of our regular supervision routes and areas. But yes, during lunch periods, we believe that that is a space for students to eat. That gives us additional 60 to 68 student spots for lunch, which would take our capacity even higher, right? To like possibly like about 500 students being served at a specific point in time.
It takes some getting used to, but it's really well-lighted.
Yes.
Kids love those spaces.
And once you, what I've found with students at Libertyville is, once they are very clear on the rules and the expectations, they are always willing to meet those. And we of course have students who forget those sometimes and we remind them. And then we don't have long-term issues with that. Our, our students are fantastic. And we would be building that to have enough garbage receptacles and things so that eating there would not be something where people would be looking at how, what do I do with this material now that I've done with my meal?
Other questions, comments?
I just, thank you so much for working with so many different stakeholders because I know, and getting their input in this plan because I have personally seen this at least three times in three different social media. So it's being shared and the word is being spread, and it seems to be mostly positive. So, thank you.
And I'd like to just give a special shout-out to Kelly DeBrulier, my assistant, because she has been grabbing people and pulling them in just and doing individual conferencing with them from staff members to students, saying, "Okay, take a look at this. What do you think of this?" And recording everything and writing it all down and then bringing that feedback to the professional team. So it's, it's been something that more and more staff and students are aware that we're doing and the excitement is building. And everyone who's coming in and looking at the designs is very excited and believes this will make not only a huge impact on the, the, the learning of the building, but also the student and staff kind of just health and wellness. Being able to provide a full space for our ESPs who have, don't have offices necessarily, but would have now a nice kind of staff cafeteria with natural light and things that is connected more directly to their part of the building is also a big plus for us.
Just the logistics and of the meetings and the gathering, internal, external people, it's just, I really appreciate that. Going through that myself right now with, with our projects, it's just an enormous undertaking and I appreciate it.
And so many variables.
Yeah, I appreciate all the effort.
Look at how tight the, did you look at the bathroom schedule for how many days they're going to do each section? So 15 days to do the rough-in for the plumbing and electrical and then two days for this and two days for that. Like, oh geez, that's tight.
Yeah. And Mark does a great job of communicating with us in the building what those are so that we know exactly when we have to shut down and when we have to have alternatives in place.
Yeah, I provided a tentative schedule and we're working on the details, of course. As we do more investigation in the area, we have lack of drawings for when things were built back then. So we've got a couple surprises that we've come across. Nothing we can't overcome. But this is an example. Like I said, we're working on our abatement design as well as the bathroom package. We've ensured, to get it done this summer, talk to manufacturers, can we get the stall doors? Yeah, okay, once the final drawings, we can get them in two weeks. And, you know, tile availability of the choices that we have out there right now, all those different things to ensure that we can, you know, open it next summer. The one key thing that would come up would be at the FNF Committee in April, on April 8th, we would, to make this happen, we would have to ask for a special board meeting, discuss the project at the FNF. And if we could have a special board meeting after the FNF Committee, you know, that night just to approve the contractors to move forward with construction for the summer. That's one key thing that's in the timeline. We're, we're just pressed for time in order to make that happen.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, for, we actually have less abatement than we thought, than we discovered, but else we have more demo, more delicate demolition. There's a concrete ceiling that we were unaware of as we were doing more investigation. So that'll have to be removed. So that's going to add time, will save time on the front end. So we're working through all those details. And then part of the abatement with this summer, in order for a second summer to be successful, we would be removing the flooring in the cafeteria eating area this summer. we would be removing the flooring in the cafeteria eating area this summer, because that is asbestos tile and adhesive on the floor. So in that area, we remove the floor, grind it all down smooth as part of the abatement and then put some type of sealer on to get us through, you know, this, for school year. So when we clean the floor, it's not just a raw concrete. So those little details, you know, it all adds up in time and we're trying to grab as much time as we can throughout the project.
Yeah, appreciate that. Okay, moving on, enrollment projections.
Yeah, I just have the report in there. I don't have a presentation, just really sharing the information that our enrollment is continuing to project to decrease as, really as we've been projecting so far. Over the next five years, we are anticipating being down about 2.4% a year. But next year in particular, about 2.9 in total in the district. That's going to be more felt at Vernon Hills, which is trending close to, between 4% and 5% decrease in enrollment. Libertyville is about a 1.4% decrease. So that's something that we're, we're watching for. And really, you're seeing enrollment decreases at our feeder schools, so those eventually make their way to us. And one thing that still seems to be holding true is when we did the enrollment projections with Casarta a few years ago now, is that the folks primarily in Vernon Hills are not quite yet migrating, meaning older folks selling their homes and younger folks coming in. The sense is, is that's going to happen, but it is not happening right as much and it, and it will happen. So I think his sense was don't go selling a building, but it will happen eventually. So keep that in mind for the future. So that's important. I will say one thing that seems like a bit of glimmer in terms of enrollment is in 2021 for, for live births by county, which is, it's the most current and specific data that we really have public access to. Live births increased for the first time in many years. And live births have been on a steady decrease. That also was the year of pandemic, so don't know if that was a one-time increase or if that's looking like a change in a trend. But those students won't be here for quite a while. So just wanted to give you a brief update because enrollment is a primary driver of a lot of the things that we do.
Thank you.
With that decrease in enrollment, there is a commensurate decrease in FTE. Is that generally true?
One thing I'd want to comment on that, and it came up when we were talking about some of our programs to support some of our learners who we know are coming to us with gaps, that we are going to take some of the FTE that would maybe normally be a savings and dedicate it towards our intervention staff, that we know we're going to be needing for students in our heterogeneous classes, for our increased students who are coming to us multilingual. So we do predict there could be some decrease in staffing, but we don't see it being a one-to-one because we have programmatic needs that are, that are changing. So we will have all of that at our March staffing report that we bring to you. But I do think that is in, in general, when the number of students go down, the number of teachers you need to teach those students goes down. And that is the general path. But because we have programming changes, we're, we're anticipating absorbing some of that loss into intervention positions.
If I could also add, Denise, to your point, the other thing Dan shared with us was that of the two, even though our overall student population is decreasing, the number of students who have an IEP is increasing and they often require a different level of service. And our fastest growing student population are EL students, who also require a little bit more of an intensive support, especially as they are in their first year or two of adapting and acculturating to high school in the United States. So to Denise's point, there, while there's generally a drop in staffing when student enrollment goes down, some of these other programs and student enrollment going up in these special programs may create a need for staffing in those areas.
Well, you've thought about it. Yeah, because from a teacher perspective, you know, decreased enrollment makes me nervous. So I'm glad you're thinking about it.
Other comments, questions?
My intention is not to make anyone nervous, it's just to try to be as transparent about what I, what the data is showing us. Either way.
Right, right. Okay. Five-year financial projection.
Thanks, Tom. Thank you. So this is our annual process for reviewing our long-term projections and where that's headed. First thing I want to do is look at last year's projections, just to understand, like, these aren't necessarily done in a vacuum. We have historical projections that we do that we try to compare to, to see like what, what things have changed. This time last year, we were projected, the fiscal '24 was projected at 1 million in terms of a surplus and then '25, 1.4, and then you see it start to, the surplus start to decrease in the future years as expenditures outpace, the increase in expenditures outpace the increase in revenues. So that's what the picture looked like last year. We know that the fiscal '24 budget ended at 680,000. That was due to, you know, budgeting stuff that happened after these projections were done, because budgeting is a process that happens in the, in the springtime. Also, just review real quick, some of the, what I try to do each year with projections is recommend some steps. And we've done a lot of different things over the years in terms of fund balance, fund balance policy, recognition of property taxes, things that I think are helping, moving us better in the direction of more accurate representation of our finances. Last year, we talked about incorporating long-term capital planning into these projections, so that was completing the prioritization and doing, adding, adding that detail to the five-year projections. My recommendation last year also was to be cautious about adding new things, consider offsets, revenues to offset some of our expenditures. And really, the idea is small changes you can make now can have an exponential impact five years from now, when you talk about compounding interest or compound increases in expenditures. The other thing is to continue to look at systemic changes that enhance our financial sustainability. So that's contract structures that we have, both with our employee groups, but also with our service providers as well. And then try to look for alternatives for fast-growing expenses. So that was the information last year. I do believe that, in particular, we did complete the prioritization process, which is great. And then that has led us to the conversation that we're at now with community engagement. And I have now been able to add this data to the five-year projection, so I'll show you that later on. So before we can understand where we're heading, I need to show you kind of where we've been. So when we're looking at the past data, we're looking at really the last five fiscal years, so that's 19 through 23, right, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 19 through 23, a little bit about this year where we're at and then what the future is, and that's fiscal year '25 through '29. When I'm looking at this stuff, I try to boil down a few big key takeaways. One is what is the surplus? That's the first piece of information to look at. What is, meaning, what are the annual expected excess of revenues over expenditures? And these are the same that we've been looking at for several years now. So these haven't changed. Fund balance percentage, what percentage of fund balance looks like over time? And then any trends that are sticking out in terms of revenue and expenditures. So this is the history of our district, both the last five years and what our budget is this year. Those previous fiscal years, you know, '20 and '21 in particularly were COVID and those, it's a lot cheaper to run school when the children are not here for half of the year or when you shut down nearly a quarter of the year and you stop.
Not nearly as much fun, though.
Not, not at all. So those, those years are a bit of anomalies. Fiscal '22 was really our first year back to normal, quote unquote. And that has a deficit, really, the, the reason for that deficit was when we made the change of a recognition of property taxes. Otherwise, it would have been a surplus there, but that was really, the idea was that a one-time change. Last year, fiscal year '23 did have a deficit of 420, 422, 52,000, excuse me, but that was intentional because that included a 2% COLA stipend that we paid for all staff to try to help offset the impact of inflation at that time. So that was kind of a one-time spend of money that was spent last year and did bring it down, but otherwise it would have been operated at a surplus. You can see this year, our budget was 680,000, based on the financial review that I gave last time. Our, our fiscal year '24 is looking like it's trending closer to 3 million, based on interest income is a lot higher than we thought. Interest rates have been a lot higher longer than we would have guessed. And we have fewer on the expenditure side, primarily driven by students, fewer students in outplace facilities than we had predicted in really April of last year. This is a chart of enrollment projections, so the same data that's in the report as well, kind of showing where the data is trending. For this, the context is Casarta A is John Casarta's lowest reasonable estimate that we can have for enrollment. C, the yellow C, is the highest and the, the red B is the most likely path. Then the green line is updated with, if it's historical, it's actual enrollment. And then if it's, if it's future, it's, it's internal projections based on the historical accrual. So you can, the historical actual enrollment. You can see we're trending very close to B, so that seems, that data seems to hold you a little bit under in some of the years, but that in general, that's where we see ourselves trending. And please note the, the Y-axis, it doesn't go to zero. It's, it's meant to show you kind of the difference between them, because sometimes if it goes to zero, you're just going to see a bunch of lines smooshed together and you can't really see the nuances. All right. In terms of projections, revenue assumptions, as a reminder, 88% of our property tech, of our revenues come from property taxes, so that is the most significant source of revenue we have. And the most significant assumption in that revenue is what is CPI? That's going to be, that's the biggest driver of our revenue. So if you could boil down the driver of our revenues to one number, is CPI has the biggest impact, which is not necessarily true of every single school district, but it is for us and it is for many. So what you can see here is a chart of historical CPIs. This is CPI based on levy year, so this is, these, the, the 2023, for example, is based on the levy, not necessarily based on when that CPI was determined. But you can see the history there through the fives and actually the 2024 is the 3.4. That is the CPI that is going to be for 2024 that we will look at later this fall, but that number is, is real and is decided and is incorporated into these projections. Beyond that, I'm really basing it on a little bit less than a 10-year average, 2.5 for two years and then 2%. You can use higher estimates, however, we have, especially recently, last few years, pegged our salary increases to CPI, and so they have a corresponding impact, meaning whatever the, whatever that CPI is in the year, I have then assumed the raise based on historically what we've done, based on that. So if I change the assumption here on CPI, I would then also change the corresponding assumption on the expenditure side to raises, which raises are also the most important driver in terms of our expenditures. So that's the, that, that's what my assumptions are for CPI.
Just to be clear on that, the two 5%, that's not actually CPI, that's capped CPI.
Yeah, so that's correct. This is the CPI that we are able to access that impacts our property taxes. CPI for 2022 levy was actually 7%, but we were capped at 5. And the CPI for 2023 was 6.5. We were also capped at 5 because the rule is you can get CPI or 5%, whichever is less. And until that year, that other part of that sentence never really mattered. Now it matters a whole lot. So thank you for that clarification. All right. There are two other sources of revenue that I just need to touch on that continue to be a little bit troubling and volatile in terms of projections. And really, the idea is I don't know where it's going. I don't think anybody really knows where it's going, and so it's anyone's best guess. So I'm trying to use the best sense that I have in terms of, of where I'm seeing it. So historically, it's a little hard to see the years here, but this goes back to 2019 through our budget this year. So last year, we got nearly 3 million. We were told we were going to get less this year. And, and this, this has been crazy. We've been hovering around 900,000-ish forever. It's been like clockwork. And then the last few years, it doubled and then it doubled again. It was just crazy in terms of the increases. We were told it was going to decrease, so I budgeted, I budgeted roughly a $600,000 decrease. The number we got is 2.1. A month ago, I said, it seems like we're trending closer to 2.3. We might end up closer to 2.1 now that I'm, I got another month's of real data in, but we're still in that range. And so the question is, where is it going? Was it up and it's going to eventually come back down back to 900,000? Or is it going to kind of level out? I don't know. My assumption right now is I'm just plugging in 2 million. This could easily swing a million dollars either way. This can end up being 3 million, this can end up being 1 million. And that, that, those are very true and very real, I think. But I don't know. So I'm trying to pick a middle ground. Similarly to CPI is interest income has been quite volatile over the last several years. So you can see 2019, we had 2.5 million and then when interest rates tanked during the pandemic, we got very little, just, just about a half a million dollars. Last year, we got 1.79. This year, 2024, I assumed a little bit less because I was not going to assume higher interest rates and we're starting to work on these projects, so you'd have less money to invest. So therefore, I'm assuming less interest income. Well, we've already received more than 1.7 million this year and we're getting, we're looking like we're going to get closer to, you know, over two, well over 2 million for interest income. So the question is, is that going to continue? Like, part of the reason for the interest income high right now is interest rates, Fed interest rates really, really do impact, they're the biggest impacter of our projections and I don't, just don't know where they're going to be. So it's really, it's anyone's guess. I'm assuming, again, kind of a middle ground. I'm not going to assume that we're going to get 2 million every year from interest income, also not going to assume we're only going to get half a million. I'm trying to pick a middle ground and for right now, I'm just sticking with 1.4 million. But again, no, that could easily swing a million dollars either way. So those are the primary revenue drivers that I wanted to highlight for you, because those are, those are either the most impactful or somewhat the most difficult to anticipate. On the expenditure side, a reminder is that 71, 72% of our budget goes to employ, pay the salaries and benefits for the staff that works here. That's very common amongst school districts. It's really just depends, if it's bigger or smaller to other districts, it really just depends on what functions do they outsource. Meaning some districts, their busing is in-house, their B&amp;G is in-house, their food service is in-house. For us, those are all outsourced, so that's why you see a slightly larger purchase service for our district than you may see for others. But 72% of our money goes to the employees that are here. With that is, so really two important drivers is what are the raises, how many people are you employing? And then what are the raises going to be? Are the most significant drivers of terms of cost? What you can see here are what the FTE changes that I am projecting is a lot of zeros. And so we saw enrollment decrease, but I want to be clear, my, my projections are assuming zero. And so back to kind of the question you asked earlier, if enrollment goes down, does, does FTE go down? It hasn't. And so I'm not going to assume that it does. And so I, I'm not assuming it's going up, I'm not assuming it's going down. You put whatever number you want, but you need to put a number in there. Right now, I'm assuming flat. So I can run various scenarios of what does it look like if we added one or two or three or the other way and to understand how, how it compares. But for, for purposes, and especially when you see the final result, this is a key assumption that produces that number. Similarly to how many people do you employ is what are the raises that are going to be? So for fiscal year '25, we already know what the raises are going to be, especially for teachers, because that contract is there. For, honestly, for ESP and admin, we don't know. So what I'm doing, what I'm showing you is I'm showing you, you can really think of this as a bit of like a status quo projection. I'm showing you continuing to do the similar thing that has been done based on the CPIs. So for example, for teachers, 4.34. So wait, the way that is, is the teacher contract is settled right now. With step and base increase, their, their raise is going to be about 5.06%. Roughly, it's not, I don't have the exact numbers right here, but roughly two-thirds of our teachers are on the schedule, roughly a third of the teachers are on, on the longevity. And so if you, the teachers on the schedule will get the 5.06, teachers on longevity get 3. You mesh those together, you get about a 4.3. That's, that's really how that math works. Based on the contract, so in 2026, which would be based in the 3.4 CPI, that would be the average raise, because that's the, that's the, that's the way the range is right now in our contract, because it's a floor and a ceiling of, I don't remember what the floor Cause it's a floor and a ceiling of, I don't remember what the floor is, but the ceiling is three. So that would still generate a five point, five percent increase on, on the base, on, on schedule. So I'm projecting that forward. And then as you get to twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine, it gets slightly smaller because of that CPI assumption. So that's where, if I had a higher CPI assumption, I would carry it forward down here to have them tie. And then for the other positions, what you really see is historically what we've done is the average raise that we've seen on teachers. That's been the average raise that's been assigned to the other category. So I'm just continuing that forward. So that's why those numbers are there. And yeah, so it's more of a status quo in terms of this is what we've been doing. This is assuming what we've been doing continues. One thing that is a deeply concerning trend is our medical insurance. This, since I've been here, pretty much in every district, I try to analyze what's going on on salaries, try to analyze benefits and everything. When I got here, everything that it was telling me in terms of what we, what I saw in terms of our benefits was not out of line. It wasn't out of line in terms of our comps. It wasn't out of line in terms of growing too fast. It seemed to be working really well. However, the last really three years have been, two years especially have been particularly troubling. So what this chart is showing you is the renewal rate increases for our PPO and HMO options in each year. So last year, which is two thousand and twenty four, that, that's this year we're in, so last year's projections. So two thousand and twenty four, the year in right now, our PPO went up seventeen and a half percent from last year. This is not unique to us. Many, many, many school districts are facing this exact same thing. Our HMO went up twelve, like twelve point eight percent last year. Our preliminary revenues that we just got this information out is that our PPO is again looking like a nine point, I think it's like a nine point five or a nine point eight percent increase. And HMO is right there again with nearly a twelve, I think a twelve point seven or something like that. I can't remember off the top of my head the exact numbers, but you can see the charts there. Those increases are not sustainable. In five years from now, if that continues, that is a deeply troubling trend that I'm going to show you later. But that's something that we absolutely need to watch out for. And that's the example of something that I'm talking about. Small changes now can have a very significant impact going forward. Now, I don't know what the future holds with insurance. I would love to say, man, we did our big increases and it might stay flat. I don't know. But historically, industry trends show you that you're, you're somewhere between five and eight percent usually on something like this. But 10% plus is not sustainable for that. And I, and I, I want to be clear, I, I think it's a problem for everyone, not just the school district budget, but it's a problem for people's personal budgets, like people that pay towards the health insurance, they went up seventeen percent too. And so I don't want to minimize that either. Like it, it is a problem there. So with that, these projections are showing, excuse me, the ten and a half percent is the blend, kind of a blended rate based on the PPO and HMO. And we have way more people on the PPO, so that will carry more weight, less people on the HMO, so that, that increase carries less weight. And then beyond that, I'm at eight percent. I don't want to be at eight percent, but the more recent data I have, I don't have anything better to guess on. But you will see that, that's a serious number and that can have serious impacts five years from now. In terms of other things, I've got other assumptions that are in there. Lane changes are holding pretty consistent, a hundred and fifty thousand. It'll vary depending on the year, but the, the average is still there. I account for retiree replacements. So one of the things is how can you give, how, how could you have a four, a four and a half, four point three percent raise? And still afford, afford it when your increase has maybe only gone up three percent? How could you do something like that? It's, it's the offset of retiree savings. It's the idea that somebody that is at the end of the career, at the high end of their earnings, gets replaced with somebody that's not quite near at the end of their career yet, and they're at lesser earnings. And that savings is really what offsets the total cost of salaries increases. Post retirement is based, is a schedule based on when they retire. I budget an estimate for new hires based on historical information, tuition reimbursement. I'm holding at about a hundred thousand based on what I'm seeing. And the four three contributions that my assumption is that stays consistent with what we've been doing. So that's a fixed number negotiated in our contract and it's a fixed number that we've been using. I'm assuming that that stays the same. So that's, that's the assumptions there. On non-salaried benefits, so there's purchase services, supplies, equipment, stuff like that. It ranges depending on it. I've got the data in there if you want to see more specifics, but it kind of depends on the object. For some things in capital, for example, O and M capital, we've got that bumped up to four point five million for this year to try to account for our summer stuff that we're doing, transportation. Unfortunately, I've got another 10% increase. We're still working on that. Capital projects fund is now, I'm going to have data that includes that. So I'm going to separate that out, showing you operating, and I'm going to add that in to show you especially the fund balance impact. One thing to note is you don't have this information yet, but we're, you know, forecast, you'll have this soon, is additional things that we're not doing now that would be connected to our strategic plan are not in here. Mostly because that, those numbers are not finalized yet and I just haven't been able to incorporate them. So the things that we're doing now that we've implemented because of our strategic plan, I'm assuming those continue. But the additional things added on that you're going to get information on hopefully next month is not included in these numbers. So just to give you an understanding of what's in here, what's not in here. Okay, so here's the results. Again, we're going to look at surplus, fund balance, and I already talked about trends. This is the projection of what we look like for the next five years. So for fiscal year twenty five, it looks like a small surplus of four twenty one. And then two thousand, or twenty six, it's six oh eight. And then it starts to decrease. If you look back at what the projections were last year, you will see two thousand and twenty four is down from where it was. That's because we had things that were added since I did the projections. And then two thousand and twenty five, that was at like one point four, but now it's down to four hundred. Part of that is because of the changes that we added in this fiscal year that I'm assuming carry forward. And we added on to the, we added on to the capital for summer projects. So that's, that's another difference that was enhanced based on the projections last year. But two thousand and twenty six, you'll notice those are very similar numbers to what they were last year. So what you're going to see is twenty seven and twenty eight look a bit improved. They're up about three hundred ish thousand from where they were that last year, but two thousand and twenty nine wasn't here last year, but it is now. And that projected a two point four million deficit is problematic. My intention is not to panic anyone, and I definitely say the earlier projections are more reliable than years out because there's a lot of assumptions that can change. How many times did I just tell you on things that I don't really know what it's going to be? There's so many of them. And so as we get closer, we'll use more accurate data, but for now I don't know, but I can definitely see some things that are, that are happening. And again, I told you on interest income, CPPRT, for example, on just the revenue side, though each of those can vary, one, one million each, either way. We just don't know. So that's information on the, where that is, where that is headed. One of the things that also is impacted by this is our fund balance percentage. So I've showed you at least last year, we had projections that were showing surpluses for few years. And same with this, surpluses for a couple of years. But if you notice, the fund balance percentage is, is decreasing. That is because if your expenditures increase, you have to keep putting more money in the bank in order for the fund balance percentage to remain the same. And so mathematically, what does that mean? In order for that, oops, sorry. In order for that to remain the same mathematically, you need to be closer to one point two million in an annual surplus to keep that percentage the same because of how our expenditures are changing each year, how they're growing each year. So that's really kind of a target number that you can do that will get you at a consistent fund balance percentage. All right. So that's that side. Another thing to watch, like, so what's happening on the big picture level that feeds into the deficit starting to happen? Really what you're seeing is, it, it really is expenditures starting to outpace revenues. So you can, for the, for the first few years, we're okay. Next year, you know, revenues or expenditures projected to increase faster than revenues. But then in year two, it seems to counteract. But then year three, it starts revenues outpacing pretty significantly. And that's really just assuming a lower CPI, but the raises are still in there with the assumptions and insurance continuing to grow. And, excuse me, and so that, there's data in the report about further information for what that looks like. Sorry, I should have paused there before I went further. So now I've shown you operating that doesn't include the capital projects fund. Now I'm going to show you the number, which you have in your report, so this shouldn't be a surprise. But this is now the number of our operating fund balance with the capital projects in there. And so that is really what the projects that Tom and Mark walked through of paying for those projects over the next few years. Some of which will start to pay now and some of which will happen in the next few years. I don't know exactly when each year will fall yet, so I've tried to space that out based on my best sense. But you, you roughly see the pattern. So this is showing at the end of this fiscal year, thirty five percent, twenty six percent in twenty five, and then starting in twenty six, it does appear that we are getting under the twenty five percent threshold that we have set in board policy. So what this is, what this is telling us is ba, basically, based on our trend, we will fall below our target fund balance of twenty five percent or what we're, what our policy states is the minimum target. The primary reason for that is because the surpluses are not at that one point two million dollar mark to maintain the consistent one. So if we had those for those years, you would see that be consistent. And so that is not an encouraging trend. It certainly could be going down faster, but that is something that is, something that I'm uncomfortable with in terms of where our future is heading. But again, based on assumptions that we don't know where some of these are headed. That, that was, that was with the current fiscal year budget. Now I've added in, I told you, it looks like fiscal twenty, fiscal twenty four is headed more towards a three million dollar surplus. So now this is what it looks like if we really do end up with a three million surplus this year, what that looks like. And so that raises all of the numbers, but still in fiscal year twenty six, we're still kind of right there. So that's something we'll need to watch over the next year for sure, year or two, to see kind of where things are trending. In terms of trends that are concerning, it's really the benefits. So this is over those five years, based on all those assumptions that I showed you and everything else that are in the projections, you can see how salaries are changing over five years. You know, salary costs, not salaries necessarily, but salary costs in aggregate changing over those years, purchaser services, supplies and materials, things like that. Benefits are, are increasing much, much, much faster. And that's because medical insurance has been very high increases. And that's with my assumptions of those increases unfortunately sustaining, which I, I don't want, I don't want that to happen because that is having a massive impact on that, that two point four million deficit in fiscal year twenty nine. So that is something that I think needs to get looked at. So what are my recommendations? My first recommendation is to try to slow down increases where we can, where they're controllable. That includes staffing, that includes department budgets, that's most of our expenditure side. Slow things down. I'm not saying cut things, I'm not saying, that's not what I'm saying, but I'm, but slowing things down will be critical to how that will look five years from now. Small changes now can have a big impact five years from now. The other one is be cautious about adding, adding additional operating costs. So not only am I talking about slowing things, slowing things that we already have from increasing too fast, but being very careful about adding new things that are just going to be an annual operating cost. One time costs are one thing, annual operating costs are a different thing. So that's something to consider as well. That's very similar to the recommendation I had last year. And the third one is really the same with one tweak is the, the structure systemic changes. Contract structures is still something that you should look at and medical insurance. That is something that we do need to look at. That won't, won't be up to us alone to solve, but that's something that we do need to look at as a system to help improve. So those are my honest projections. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the question that I asked earlier today, the came from page nineteen and it's the one that you sent back. I don't see a question here. And that's because I changed my format. I asked, how do we do this when it comes to medical insurance? So medical insurance, you said this must slow down, but how do we have an impact on that?
There, in, in order to really answer that question, I would need to explain to you a little bit more about health insurance works. A primary way that you impact that is through your contract negotiations are going to, because those terms are negotiated through those. That's going to be a, a primary way that you do that. And then another one is working with Nihip, our insurance pool, to try to find out what other ways that they would recommend that you could look at impacting that. And again, medical insurance, like I truly, it's not unique to us. Many, many school districts are dealing with this, this exact same thing. And actually I want to be transparent. I've been getting, I've talked to other business managers who their boards are hearing the same information. They're like, man, can we buy our insurance somewhere else? The reality is, is you're not going to be able to get the exact same thing somewhere else for cheaper. That's not what we're talking about. The, the only thing you can get is, you can get something cheaper for cheaper. So that, that, I mean, the costs for medical care are increasing at a rate that are, that is difficult to absorb. So.
Yeah, I think the way we've been able to, historically districts have been able to do that is to cut back on what the policy contains, whether it's higher deductibles, that kind of thing. And that's, happens ever so slowly over the years. I can remember when deductibles were much lower and now they're wherever they are in our current policy here. But you know, that's, that at least curbed the increase at some point in time. But it's, yeah, there's, we don't have a lot of control over what their price is to us. If we just keep buying the same thing and the healthcare costs are going up, so that's a, that's a rough one.
Correct. And medical insurance doesn't necessarily have to be exclusive in and of itself. Cause the idea is all right, if medical is going up eight, that, you, you can't do it all. You can't, you can't continue the raise pattern you have and pay for the increase in medical insurance. Like both are not affordable, quite simply. So you try to look at a balance maybe. So it doesn't necessarily all have to be solutioned in medical insurance, but it, it's a combination of things.
Other questions, comments? Thank you for that, Dan. I appreciate the update.
Yeah, again, very thorough.
Yeah, this, this information is critical to us making good decisions. So thank you for the work that you do to project and to be very transparent about all of our finances.
And also just stylistically, thank you for including hyperlinks into things. Like all of these things now have hyperlinks in them. So it makes it so much easier to go back to, I went back to the September report because I, I missed something. And so thank you for that.
Yeah. Okay. Next up, the HHS Health Life Safety Survey Plan.
So this is a regular report that we try to give an update to, that every other month we're reporting on this because this was approved back in the summer now, or it was in the summer. And so priority A items are things you have to resolve within a year. And so I want to make sure that we're keeping this in front of you to see how these are changing. A lot of these will get resolved through the bidding. Actually, that's later on in this agenda. So, excuse me, that's our bi-monthly update. The details are in there.
Made a lot of progress on all those things.
I, I will say Mark and Ozzy especially have been super focused on getting these things resolved. And so it definitely takes work and some money, but they're, they're moving forward on a lot of things.
Yes, Ozzy and his in-house staff knocked a bunch of work out and did it in-house and they've done a great job.
Okay. Anyone have questions, comments on that? Interesting to, to review. Next on the agenda is flooring options. Thank you, Mark, for bringing this back to us. Give us an idea of what, what these are like. Are there any big picture items you want to draw our attention to? Or does anyone have a specific question or comment?
I have a question. What does the building want?
Good question.
I think it depends on the building and it depends on the space.
So this is about the Vernon Hills carpet?
Yeah, the question arose based.
Yeah, we were like, yeah, but isn't tile more durable? And I mean, there's, you spelled out the pros and the cons. To me, the most important consideration is what does the building want? But what does the principal and the staff want? Do they prefer to have tile or do they prefer to have carpet?
Yeah, and there's also a cost element too that this was all about.
In, in the Vernon Hills, like the, the requests, we're, we're bringing forward what they're asking for, which is the carpet in the hallways. What are, the intention behind this was to have a broader, broader discussion about what are the different options? And like moving forward, you know, does it make more sense to decide on one method or another? What are the pros and, the pros and cons? It's hard, cons are. It's hard, cons are, well, both pros and cons are a bit subjective, as you will notice in some of the, some of those details. And so there's pros on both sides, depending on that. And there's interests on that. So just, just the same as you have your own house and flooring, you, you might think of pros and cons, and then you might just say, you know what? I just want hardwood floors in my living room, based on what your decision is in preference. So we absolutely try to accommodate what the buildings are requesting. And I would say that's the primary driver behind what the flooring is in any particular space, plus trying to envision what is the space used for. And so I think when the building is making the request, they're trying to think of what is the space used for. So that, that will impact. I mean, if you think of the floors that we've done recently-ish, I mean, you think about the floor in the, in the dance studio here at this building, the floor in the fieldhouse that we did, the floor in the multipurpose athletic space above the dance floor, I can't remember what the name of it is. Butler Lake Hall, maybe? Things like that. So it's tried to base on what, what the, what the, what the function of that space is and what, what they're looking for to get out of it. So it, so, so to answer the question, for Vernon Hills hallway, for example, that was the request of the building was for the carpet in that space. For other ones that will come up, it's kind of based on what their request is as well. But even through that, we're trying to make sure they have access to information to see what they would like, what they prefer, and what the pros and cons are.
Don, to your point, I, I, I think we, you know, rely on the recommendations from the administration, what, what they really feel is most appropriate. I think the question was just raised in all honesty because, you know, historically, we've, common sense was put tile down. That's going to be more durable, it's going to last longer. But that doesn't necessarily hold true. And it's not necessarily the best surface for the environment, for the instructional environment and the acoustic environment and the, you know, the, the ability to use it for what it's meant to be used for. But I, I agree with you, Don. We, we look for the recommendation from the building, from the, the people that are going to have to deal with it and use it. So from, from Mark, from the building administration, that kind of thing. But it was just more of, I think, an honest curiosity as to what the decision-making process is for those. And I think there's going to be opportunities for both, for at least these two options in different places in the building.
Well, there was an eye-opener also. Do you want to tell everybody what the answer to the question that I gave to Dan, then Dan asked you, then you sent to me? It was about the material costs. What's the material cost difference? What's the installation cost difference?
Yeah, Don posed a few questions. So I talked to our installer, Libertyville Tile, just to get some quick information. LVT and carpet, they run about the same price per square foot. Obviously, if you go to a real high-grade, you know, but the commercial carpet, commercial grade LVT, very similar price. Your installation for the LVT is more expensive because there's more floor prep. When you put down carpet, you can, some of the waves, you, you don't have to be that, that perfect with the floor. With the LVT, if you don't do that, and you'll look down some of our hallways with this old VCT, you'll see trial marks after so many years. I mean, everything shows. And then you wax it and it really, really shows.
Yeah, even a little piece of, you know, a little pebble or something. The minutest piece, after a while, it'll burst through that LVT.
Yeah. So your prep cost is basically double for the LVT that is carpet. Presently, it's about four seventy-five a square foot for LVT and then for floor prep and insta, that was installation also. And floor prep and installation for carpet is two dollars and thirty cents. So double the price. Your daily cleaning labor is comparable as far as it, when you're depending on the size in a classroom, you got a vacuum, or if it's a hard floor, you got a mop. It's done by hand. Hallways, done with machines. So, you know, we have a riding vacuum at, at Vernon Hills, and we have stand-up floor machines here and riding machines here. The difference, do you have a cleaning solution when you're doing the LVT on a daily, daily basis? And then your carpet requires extraction, you know, one to two times a year, depending on traffic and location. So one time a year for sure for a classroom, but you want to do your hallways two times a year and at least two times a year. And then if you see an area wearing or whatever, then do some spot cleaning and, and do that.
What does extraction mean?
It's a carpet extractor, so.
It's like the steam cleaner?
Brewer, but you don't use shampoo. You use hot water. You don't put any chemical in, you spray that hot water in and you suck it out right away.
The things we learn.
Yeah.
And I want to thank you for going to that extra work. I appreciate it.
And it's, it's for Vernon Hills. We're for capital, for the summer, we want to get a larger extractor so we can be more efficient in those hallways in, in the large areas. Just an example, stay ahead of the game.
Okay. Any other questions about flooring? Okay.
But I've, just one, I was pleasantly surprised. I, I didn't realize that the LVT has a sound reduction.
Yeah.
Because it's a softer, you know, you're compared to the VCT vinyl competition tile, you know, composition tile in the hallways. So that could be suitable in the future for classrooms. You know, as an option for Vernon Hills sound wise, if they wanted to go away from carpet. And obviously carpet in the classroom is going to last a lot longer.
And it depends. If you have a science classroom where there might be spillage, you don't want carpet in there.
Yeah, no.
There are some, some logical uses for both.
And we're going to continue to trust our professional staff to work with the buildings on a project-by-project basis to determine suitability, the application and the cost effectiveness. And we'll look forward to this new information being a part of those conversations. Thank you.
Learn something new every day. Next up, solar update.
Radon testing.
Oh, I'm sorry, radon testing.
So I want to read the answers to the questions. I don't need to spend more time, but I think the idea is, I think we're interested in looking at identifying a staff member to help facilitate us doing the tests. The sense is it's about a week of work. We would, we would find someone, probably have them do it on overtime basis because everyone's has daily up, daily, daily responsibilities. But I think that's a low-cost way that we could do something like this through, through that program that was listed there. Now that, just to be clear, none of that will cover any remediation that we would need to do.
Correct.
We'll just.
It's just discovery.
And I did pose that question to the American Cancer Society, if we do have to remediate. So they weren't quite sure. So they're checking in.
I would imagine we would, like that would be a, like if we discover that
Absolutely.
we're over the limit, we would do a remedy.
Immediately, of course.
After talking to the folks there, I, maybe, I'm just to share this. You said, it seemed like the folks that run this thing, there's not a whole lot of people taking advantage of it right now. And so they were eager to help us move something like this.
Well, we will certainly look forward to seeing how we can support you in identifying that person and getting, taking advantage of this program. Because that latter option that you listed in the public materials certainly does seem like the most cost-effective way to identify any potential exposure that we might have. And if we do have to remediate, we can talk about that.
Yeah, I think people don't want to ask the question because they're afraid of the answer. And I think we need to ask the question.
Sure.
Well said.
It's just the right thing to do.
Well, that's assuming the board wants to move ahead with the radon program. There's other things involved in the radon program. You have to, for instance, you have to open a one-eight-hundred line and maintain it forever. That's about forty-five dollars a month. And, and as part of, you know, taking these funds, that's what you have to do. It can be a messaging and then it should direct you to somebody that can answer questions personally. But it's just basically an information line. And there's some other things that, you know, a part of the package and a requirement that, that have to take place.
Sure. Well, we will look forward to, at an upcoming meeting, hearing exactly what that involves. But I get the sense that the board is eager to pursue testing for our facilities.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, now on to solar.
So I want to emphasize that I'm not necessarily prepared to talk intelligently about some of these details. But I do more want to give you an update that this is, we are working on this and that I do anticipate at March, I'll be able to, if not with just me, with a friend, to help explain how this could work. But I did give you attachments in terms of some details, in terms of, excuse me, roofs that we've been, that identified as ones that we've kind of recently replaced. And they're not shaded, that could be good uses for solar. And then there are some options in terms of what layouts could look like based on those roofs from kind of a sky view. And then just some details on the numbers there that I admittedly don't really comprehend quite yet. But I'm looking to have more information next month in terms of understanding this, this data, as well as options to pay for and what, what those look like, what the impact of those would be.
My takeaway on this is Vernon Hills is a much better opportunity for solar than Libertyville.
And that's really just because there, we've been more roofs replaced recently at Vernon Hills than at Libertyville.
Yeah.
So those other roofs that are so open at Libertyville, the reason why they're not identified as possible right now is because they, we don't want to put solar up before the roof's been replaced.
Correct.
So as those roofs become available to us, then we can have the conversation about whether or not to expand the system.
The other caveat to that is Vernon Hills is built all at one same time, using the same structure, engineering, so the roofs are all the same. Here, we've got twenty-some additions. Roof structures are not all the same. So presently, we know, you know, our pool roof that can't, cannot sustain solar panels on it wasn't engineered for it. There were, there had to be cost cuts to make the budget. And one of them was, you know, putting a truss system that was large enough to handle the weight. Oh, it wasn't within the budget. And then the fieldhouse is a structure that couldn't, you know, we just did that rough, that, that structure is a moment structure. And we had problems just putting in mechanical equipment, you know, onto the roof right at the edge, you know, to meet the engineering for that. So we'll just work through roof by roof. Some roofs are, are, there's the main roof, the original roof, the concrete deck. That's not an issue. We've had to put small mechanical piece of equipment on the roof here at Libertyville and had to beef up the structure because it's undersized. So it's going to be, Libertyville is going to be a tough one. It's going to be a roof by roof situation to see, you know, when it was built and how it was engineered.
Okay. Any other questions?
I, I would just make the observation that we would need to, I, I think we're eager to have these conversations, but it has to be in the context of the five-year capital projects that we have worked so hard. And we're looking forward to seeing that updated document in concert with our strategic plan. So looking at the five-year projections, knowing that we have to be very deliberate about where we invest our money, I think this is a very important conversation, but it also has to be in the context of a, of a larger conversation.
I think our goal is just to keep it on the radar so that when it does, when it can be part of that, that bigger context, then we jump on it. We can, we can take advantage of that. Otherwise, if we ignore it, it's never in the, you know, in that mix, so.
So I'd say, stay tuned for next month when we'll have more information as well as different options that you can have to think for something like this.
Thank you.
Next up is landscaping bid that we will be voting on next board meeting.
Was this one there this morning?
What?
I, I don't remember seeing this this morning, the last three items. The last item that I had was the solar update.
They were out on Friday, as far as I know.
Okay. Well, just, our current landscape contract ended in the fall. Our last contract, we had a five-year bid on it. So we went for a five-year term again this time. We had three contractors come to the pre-bid meeting, and we only received two bids. Landscape Concepts Management had the contract before. Their, their bid increased about, it's about twenty percent increase from what was last year. But then if you look back at the original prices, you know, five years ago, and then with COVID and everything else, the twenty percent increase doesn't seem a lot. The last contract, the last two years, they held the same pricing. But as we know, the cost of everything has gone up. Our second bidder, I'm not sure where they're bidding from. Same documents, but substantially large, larger amount of money. So we're recommending that we take Landscape Concepts bid for the next five years and bring it up to the next board meeting for approval.
Any questions or concerns? Okay, we'll look forward to voting on that. Libertyville High School lighting and HVAC repairs.
So this is a bid that really incorporated like two projects, hallway ceiling lighting, and then the HVAC installation. If you recall, we approved the pre-purchase of the equipment. Now this is the bids for the installation. By the way, we got these, these bids in Friday morning. And so it was a quick turnaround time to get these in. But yeah, so I'll let you explain how the bids came in, and then I'll talk about the totals.
Okay. So we had several contractors come out for the Libertyville site. Sorry, clicked on the wrong document here. Oh. And so to stay within budget, we were using money from savings, other projects on our roofing. And we phased the, with alternates, the hallway lighting and bid it with three alternates, a base bid and then three alternates. So the base bid includes both the HVAC installation and the first floor removal of all old ceiling on the first floor and install new lighting on the first floor in the areas that weren't done. So for example, in front of the principal's office, that hallway, the two thousand and three edition, that has a newer style ceiling, but it has the old light fixtures. So that was not part. So it was the main hallways with the larger tiles is what we were bidding in the first alternate. We ended up with four bids. The winning bidder was Boulder Construction, they're out of Waukegan. They had part of the contract at the fieldhouse here, when we did, we did the fieldhouse. So we looked to stay within budget. Alternate number one was to do the studio theater entrance, finish the lighting and the ceiling work. And as we've been doing investigations, we might be going into that ceiling area for construction of cafeteria. So I pulled that right out as an alternate, knowing, but now we have pricing for a future, you know, so we can budget better. This alternate number two was to do the remainder of the first floor, that two thousand and three area where alls we're doing is replacing lighting. So that goes down to our quad, down around front entrance and a couple other spots on the first floor. And then alternate number three was to do stairways and, and also do the second floor. So stay within budget. We're going to recommend a bowler with the base bid, which is ceiling and lighting, as well as the HVAC installation, and to also accept alternate bid number two.
So with that, those are really a lot of the big, big rocks for our summer capital projects. So we have the list that's updated in there is kind of all those numbers. The green are numbers that came in under what we estimated. The red is numbers that came in higher. numbers that came in under what we estimated, the red is numbers that came in higher. And then you'll see a few spots where projects kind of merged based on how we ended up bidding them together. Our total right now is very close, four point five, four point five to what we estimated. That's due to the roofs coming in under and then Mark enhancing the HVAC to get more of that done to stay at the four point five. One thing that is on the pause right now is the flooring replacements at the bezzanine level, the Vernon Hills pool. Sorry, I have a hard time recalling all those words in the right order. That one is still, we're waiting for, that is estimated around hundred and.
We have a remaining budget about a hundred and, I think it's a hundred and ten thousand.
You think it was a hundred and.
Other three hundred.
So.
Or a hundred, I'm sorry, a hundred and twenty.
But based on the total that we're at already, we're at four point five now without that. And so I've said, I think right now what we need to do is pause on that, we're still going to get the numbers, but we're not, my recommendation is not to take action on that. And as we develop the fiscal year twenty-five budget, if we have the ability to hold it there, we can, but otherwise this would need to wait for a future in order for us to stay at the four point five.
So when you say twenty-five budget, to hold it and maybe put it in after July one, this summer in the next year's budget?
It, it could fit into another capital line, it's just summer capital, it's too big for that bucket. We have other things that we spend capital on in terms of vehicles, replacements, things like that. If somehow that works out that there's a lack of something and this could fit there, potentially there, but other, otherwise it would just have to wait till next summer.
The district cap, oh, I'm sorry. The district capital product, projects PDF that's in this agenda item, what timeframe is that for?
That's summer twenty twenty-four.
Four.
Which is primarily fiscal year twenty-five. We, every fiscal year, every summer, we have some things in this fiscal year and some in next. The vast majority of them are going to be in next, there will be some things, like there's some things that might have design prebills. And so the way the, the number ends up finally, because it's a June thirtieth split, is tricky, but for most of the time you're talking, this is going to be in, so when I say FY twenty-five in there, I mean, that's when the money, the most of that money is going to hit.
Be dispersed, okay.
Does that answer your question?
It does. I, I.
I think I also see you looking at how well they're labeled in terms of the, does it say on the top of that? The label on that particular spreadsheet doesn't say what year it is, so I think maybe to some readers, knowing if it says the capital, district capital project list.
The top right hand of that document says FY twenty-five.
There we go, thank you.
Just because we have a tab of all the fiscal years and that feeds that data. So if you think we can be more clear, I'm happy to adjust.
No, no, I just wanted to be clear which time period this particular spreadsheet came from and because I had to blow it up to see it, the upper right corner disappeared, which is why I asked what the timeframe was, but so does there exist a document that has a longer time period?
Oh, for sure, we have the long-term list, so the, we have the long-term list and I know we've talked about putting that up, we can absolutely, that's on the list to do to get that out and get that more public for sure.
It's all information that we've had at, at meetings, so it's, it's not any new information. You've shared that bigger, longer timeframe.
Yeah.
Document with us.
You haven't seen it for a while, you know, Mark tries to work on updating that every year. I mean, it's updated, it's definitely been updated for this year for sure, so we can show you that information and the problem is, is, not the problem, one of the things with that list is like that's, is anything, that's the long-term plan and what actually ends up happening is not always quite exactly how that's laid out. Things shift based on, all right, he thinks these things are going to be there, but also based on just restraints and timing and all that kind of stuff, things shift. So that would just be the context that I would want to give for that. That doesn't mean all these things are exactly going to happen in these years, but this is, this would be the schedule for a number of those things.
It's like a projection, it's a living, breathing document that's going to require tinkering and updating and adjusting.
Yes, and from the numbers we've gotten from bids, that's going to help me update that long-term because expenses have gone up. So now I have a better idea what the HVAC equipment's costing and cost per unit, so.
I appreciate that because that information also helps us make better decisions, so thank you.
Yeah, and I, I understand the, the font and everything, there's, just due to the number of projects, it's hard to get all that, all that data on one sheet.
Oh, no, it's fine, I mean, I can blow it up.
Rather than, rather than just many, many pages, so this is our attempt to try to get a, as much as we can, a summary of, of the information.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Move on to the last item, the LHS life safety work and LST area remodel and this a bid that we're going to vote on.
It's a VHS.
Yeah, yeah, VHS, life safety, yeah.
It's a, so this one is actually two, right, correct me if I'm wrong, this is two different projects that are bid together for economies of scale. One, this will hit a lot of the priority A life safety things that we have to bid out the work for, that Mark can talk real briefly on, and then the other one is the LST remodel, which is part of our long-term capital projects in terms of the, those top three things, this is part of that.
So coming from two different buckets, but bid at the same time?
Yes, for, to bid it together, stay with one general contractor, you know, working in the building and, and multiple trades, it'll be working together. We've bid it, we've bid it together. As Dan mentioned, the LST is, is the first bid, and that came in at two hundred seventy-one thousand. Again, it was Bowler Construction out of Waukegan. They really sharpened their pencils on both of these bids. Pretty comparable to Efrom, was pretty close. Then the second bid was for the health life safety, which is all the plumbing items that need to be done. Top of my head, I think is a hundred and thirty-six balancing valves and throughout the school at every sink. And then there's eyewash stations and science labs that aren't ADA compliant as well as in the prep areas. And also notice that we were short in our wood shop, did not have an eyewash station and also in our, well, it had an eyewash that was connected to the sink, the auto shop did not have anything, so I added an eyewash station in the auto shop and, and then our pottery room, we came up with a, a solution for eyewash in that area, so.
And these are items that were on that prior list, the things.
Prior list and then I added three, three areas that were lacking and needed it for safety concerns.
So it's not on the capital projects list, this last agenda item?
It's not on the summer capital projects list, it is, it is, so the, the ten-year life safety stuff, that was budgeted for out of our capital projects fund. And the LST area was part of our, our prioritized capital projects list, I understand there's a lot of, there's different lists. But it's, so yeah, the LST renovation was from our prioritized capital projects list that we're using fund balance to pay for. The rest of these ones that we had been looking at is part of our summer projects list, which our annual budget pays for.
Okay.
So the figures that we just saw as far as our financial projection for this year being at six fifty, is now you said a surplus of?
The budget is six eighty, this year will end up closer to probably three million for surplus.
Takes into consideration a yes on these?
The LST is in, the LST and the Vernon Hills stuff are in this budget for this year, for fiscal year twenty-four. So yes, it does take into account, but I, the other thing I don't let you know, like that was operating surplus, that's not total because operating is just running the funds, this stuff is budgeted in capital projects fund, which is using fund balance to pay for. So when you see the totals that include capital projects, especially the fund balance percentages, that's including paying for these as well.
Okay.
We will see those at the board meeting. Future agenda items listed here, anyone have anything else that we want to add to this? Going to do a safety and security update at the board meeting, that'll be interesting, looking forward to that.
One thing that FNF that is not a regular business thing, the fund transfer, so part of fiscal year twenty-three was that our, our transportation fund went under, went negative fund balance by just a little bit. I need to pad that so that that doesn't happen again for this fiscal year, based on timing of when we're going to get state money. So I'm going to come to you with a recommendation to do a transfer from ad fund into transportation fund, just to pad that, so we don't get too close.
Sounds good.
All right. Anything else for the good of the cause? Otherwise, we will adjourn the facilities and finance, finance facilities, and then we have a special meeting to do. Do we want to take a break now? That's up to you.
Does anybody need a break? Okay, looks like we're rolling. Roll call and appointing a secretary and.
You're not still videotaping or?
Yeah, I think we can continue, let's take, continue, yeah. Okay, so eight thirty-two, we're calling to order the special meeting, if I could ask for a roll call, please. We will wait for you to get there.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Sarah Benjamin.
Here.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Cara Drumkey.
Here.
Lisa Hessel.
Here.
Middleish Cotwell.
Here.
Sonal Kulkarni.
Okay, we note member Sonal Kulkarni not present, we have six of seven members, so we do have a quorum. I'm going to review the agenda quickly, we will have an invitation for public comment. We are going to appoint a pro tem secretary in member Kulkarni's absence. Then we will move to convene in closed session to discuss employment of an employee by the ILCS one twenty slash two C one. When we reconvene, we will be taking action and then we will move to adjourn. So at this time, I'd like to invite any members of the public wishing to address the board to please come to the podium. Seeing none, we will move on, we will appoint a secretary pro tem, Mr. Don Carmichael has grace, graciously.
Stepped into my old role.
To go to familiar territory and be our pro tem secretary for the receiving.
Thank you, Don.
Anything else we need to do before we move to convene in closed session? Okay, we're looking for a motion then, please.
Move to convene in closed session. Carmichael.
Batson, second.
Thank you. And we have a voice vote? Or do we need to roll call to go in? Okay, thank you. A roll call.
Aye.
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 Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, we are convening in closed session, thank you. We did have a motion and second to return to open session, so now we need a motion and second to approve the separation agreement for Dr. Yessenia Sanchez.
Carmichael, so moved.
Drumkey, second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Motion passes, may we please have a motion and second to adjourn the board meeting at eight fifty-four PM?
Carmichael, so moved.
Batson, second.
Thank you, voice vote, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned, thank you, everyone.